Just two miles south, eighty-four. Is that right?
We were up in McTrisco on Saturday. We were friends.
I'll go both ways.
The argument was.
You want to do the judges first, or?
Let's do it. We're going to take through the judges with the, uh.
No, 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 no.
We're going to do the whole executive session.
At five, so we should tell them.
All right. Who's in the parking lot is coming in.
Doing the executive session first?
Going to do executive session first.
I can one.
First. Thank you. We're going to be doing executive session first. Uh, hopefully half hour, forty-five minutes. I can't type, are you not?
Well, you know what?
I'm sorry, what?
No, the meantime, immediately.
Yeah, you're gonna need to, I'm just.
Oh, no.
What's the matter?
My mask comes with my.
I never thought that was possible. When I thought last time I saw him, the first.
Can you hear us?
Good.
Thank you.
Hi.
I was looking at my email. That's what time I suppose. Um, I saw an email that you wrote to Jared and named. He got a citation approved at the same time as he's serving. And he's now reading something other than what he knew. Yes, for that to heal. We have been hearing about it.
It's fine. I'll look at that.
I really saw it sick that.
Yeah, but we're going to be in executive session too.
Right, right. And he should be a part of a closer.
There's a little like large ad size, you know, court renewing. Might be somebody waiting, don't they?
Hello? Okay. Okay, we're going to get started, folks. Uh, good evening. We'll see broadcasting.
Good timing.
Good evening, and welcome to the five P M. Village of Amerik, uh, Board of Trustees' Work Session for, uh, November twenty-eighth, twenty-twenty-two. What? You said hello. Uh, I need a, I need a motion to open the meeting. Need a second. All in favor?
Aye.
The first thing we're going to do is entertain motions to go into executive session. First item on executive session is Hampshire Realty LLC versus the Village of Amerik and Village of Amerik Planning Wood. It is anticipated that a motion will be offered to enter into executive session pursuant to one oh five one D of the New York State Public Office's laws to discuss proposed pending or ongoing litigation. I'll make that motion.
Second.
Okay, uh, call the roll.
Trustees Young?
Yes.
Trustees Sanchez?
Yes.
Trustee Lucas?
Yes.
Trustee before?
Yes.
Mayor Murphy?
And I just want to point out that the board is inviting into this executive session, uh, trustee-elect, uh, Lani Yazri, trustee-elect, uh, Manny Rawlings, and the Chair of the Planning Board, uh, Kathy Seval. Yeah, but that, you know, uh, and I vote yes. Court cashier, it is anticipated that a motion will be offered to enter into executive session pursuant to one oh five one F of the New York State Public Office's law to discuss matters leading to the appointment of an individual to the position of cashier. Any motion?
The roll.
Second.
Call the roll.
Trustees Young?
Yes.
Sanchez?
Yes.
Lucas?
Yes.
Before?
Yes.
Mayor Murphy?
No. Okay, uh. Uh, L M C T V and, and, and if, if you could leave the room for a while, I'm, I'm sorry to do this to you. L M C, are we not broadcasting?
Yeah. It's the man.
So.
So as you know, there were various inflation, inflation was perfectly right as the volume of the market center from this. It's a fine change why we have more and more difficulty getting to the home is for. Um, cause the one to do the tempo of the business environment. Slowly and quickly and we've had difficulty in some cases securing supply in that case and it which is unusual for us. We've had to buy rare quantities to keep on hand of certain chemicals just because they are difficult to. Difficult to cure in some instances. So the our projections on the annual average increase in operational expenses. And one three to four percent generally with a order trying to go higher is quite fine. The third cost driver relates to water system capital improvements. Again, we're still on slide there. Well, slide number three is actually the second slide of the presentation aside from the header. Our five year plan calls for capital improvements of approximately $165 million. Those the costs of the underlying projects has increased fairly substantially. I don't know if talk about what's we got any details of that all group that's in a second, but we're looking at in general around a 20% increase in. Projects one, we go to project or launch filter plant project is going to pitch it up somewhat further. That is constantly resulting in the process wise and from precipitously. The offsets and these costs, we do have potential grant opportunities. We recently received a grant of up to $5 million related to our filter plant project, which is part of the Water Infrastructure Improvement Act. And there are other opportunities after four grants, we will pursue those as we go forward.
What do they total?
I'm sorry.
How much would they total? Those are grants that you're.
Um, it's it's difficult to say because they all have.
How much do you apply for? The $5 billion, $1 billion, $10?
We applied for $30 million. We originally applied for two programs, the inter municipal grant program, which we have previously gotten. A $3 million grant and the basic WEA grant. We've got a basic WEA grant at this point, they increased the threshold somewhat and that's $5 million. The IMG grant would be up to 30 million, but most of the funds in the earmark for financially distressed communities. And the allocations were also much smaller than those programs right there so. We're still with regard to that because there those two programs is a month administered. By the New York State Environmental Facilities Corporation. We're looking into the issue of whether or not we can qualify for one of those other grants having now been awarded a WEA grant. And right now it looks as though we probably cannot apply for that program. So we'll, as I say, continue to look into other opportunities that are available, but those those are the most recent programs.
Hopefully it'll be opportunities that are with recent.
The bond act, yeah.
Yes. Right, and and we will, as I say, incorporate their model all that they will come up. Uh, flipping to the next page of presentation. There are some details in current funding, we're getting improvement plan.
Page four?
Uh, it's page four, yes. So the current five year capital plan calls for approximately 165 million dollars projects. The Riley Filter Plant is the largest of those projects at 138 million. We showed in the five year plan at this point as 132, we've spent approximately $6 million so far on engineering and. Legal and your consulting costs related to the environmental process and the design process of the filter plant.
Have you revised the figures based upon current costs?
We have updated the cost based upon current expectations and actually add it to the midpoint of construction at this point. So the project is increased by about 20 million dollars over than that due to. Inflationary pressures.
I think it was 108.
It was 108, yes. And as far as the village of Marinex share of like 132 million dollar cost. The sharing of the projects is based on the gallons of water sold by the three members. In the case of the village of Marinex, you know, the share of that typically is around 27 or 28%. So that 132 million cost translates to a cost share for the village of approximately 36 and a half million dollars. So the Riley Filter Plant really is the focus of the five year capital plan. We have some other projects, specific projects and then some contingency. The park plane water storage tank rehabilitation for 2.1 million, the village share of that's approximately 600,000. That's, I think, the last of our seven water storage tanks that requires rehab. Currently we're doing a rehabilitation to purchase water storage tanks and then park plane number one or number two. Thank you, the last series. We're also putting in a chlorination system at shaft 22 of Delaware Aqueduct. That's one of our two sources of water for the system, Riley being the other one. That project is expected to be approximately $1 million. The share for the two marines about $4 million. That project involves putting in a chlorination system to divide the appropriate contact time. Yeah. For chlorine before it reaches the distribution system through the Evo Street.
This is because New York City is lowering the chlorine level.
That's correct. New York City has been lowering the amount of chlorine that it puts into the system on the front end. They originally talked about eliminating it entirely, but they probably will maintain a small amount of glory, but nevertheless, it's not enough. To provide the contact time that's required for our system, so we will need to. Make this improvement to the water distribution system. We are working with the city of Yonkers on this project as well because we will be sharing one of their facilities. Located near Chrisfield Road in Yonkers.
Is that because we have different standards from New York City or I mean, I don't understand. If they if they if they're comfortable with a lower chlorine level, why are we?
Well, the reason that New York City is reduced, what they're doing is they're reducing the level further up in the aqueduct. And they're fluorinating lower down.
So if they're any closer to.
We're saving money.
Um, not necessarily, we're just changing their operations because of the changes they've made.
They do it at Yonkers, am I correct?
I'm sorry.
Do you do it at Yonkers? Will they do it at Yonkers? See, they shock it with chlorine at Yonkers?
They they do their updated operational plans. We're not quite sure what what else they're going to be doing. But actually in the aqueduct, they do it a bit further up Yonkers and then they have the Hillview Resort Resort Land. And then they have another water treatment.
So our water comes from the from west of the river then?
Yes, our water comes from, pass goes in Delaware.
That's good stuff.
That's correct.
Do we have the same water as the city? Well, I mean, it's depending where the program is.
Yeah, the New York City uses a very system to a very small extent. Delaware, yeah. Delaware, okay. And Riley also have another project related to a turbidity curtain and bloom upgrade and replacement. Because of the severe weather that we've had on the lake there over time, the turbidity curtain prevents debris and. Other turbidity in the water. Particles, et cetera, getting into the intake of the system there. It's been damaged and needs to be replaced.
That's akin to what I'm going to do for watching.
And again, the ability to make sure that is best according to. Then in the contingency category of non-specific projects. We have various joint system projects or classified emergency contingency. We look at our the average spend that we've had over the last five or so years on various projects that come up. Whether they're transmission mains or related to facilities that need to be upgraded or repaired in a significant way. Those find their way in, so we've allocated $11 million to that in the capital budget. The village of Marinex shares about 3 million of that. Local distribution system projects for water main replacements for various reasons. Whether they were compromised or re-sized or failed, we have a variety of those that come off including our transite mains. We need to allocate 13.5 in the budget for that. These are local projects that are occurring.
Those of you who are watching don't know what a transite main is. Transite main is a wood main that was made out of asbestos back when they made pretty much everything out of asbestos.
Yes, and it's an asbestos.
Right, and when there's a break in one of these mains, Westchester County Department of Health requires us to replace the whole main. You just can't fix the break.
Correct, you can't replace just a section.
We can't do a patch. This this is a major and we're working on it.
And when there's a replacement, they tend to be 500 feet. Yeah, most times, a lot of times. And they use those materials because they they're better in areas where the soil is corrosive, at least historically. So you'll find a lot of them along the sound shore. In the case of local distribution system projects where those issues occur. 100% of the project cost is allocated to that member municipality. So you'll see that the percentage of the total capital project cost is quite a bit higher for the village of America because of the number of failures.
Funds in the nearby for financially distressed communities. And they the allocations were also much smaller than those programs right there, so. We're still with regard to that because there those two programs is a month administered. By the New York State Environmental Facilities Corporation. We're looking into the issue of whether or not we can qualify from. One of those other grants having now been awarded a via grant and right now it looks as though. We probably cannot. Apply for that program, so we'll, as I say, continue to look into. Other opportunities that are available, but those those.
Hopefully it'll be opportunities that have a recent.
Yeah.
Yes. Right, and and we will, as I say, incorporate their model all of that. Uh flipping to the next page of presentation. There are some details in current five year capital improvement plan. That's page four, yes. So the current five year capital plan calls for approximately one hundred sixty five, that under sixty five million dollars projects. The Riley filter plant is the largest of those projects at one hundred thirty eight million. Uh we've showed in the five year plan at this point as one hundred thirty two, we've spent approximately six million dollars so far. On engineering and. Uh legal and your consulting costs related to the environmental process and the mining process.
Have you revised the figures based upon current costs?
We have.
Yes.
Updated the cost uh. Based upon current expectations um. And actually adding to the mid midpoint of construction at this point. So the project is increased by about twenty million dollars. Due to. Inflationary.
Yes, I think it was a hundred and eight.
It was a hundred and eight.
Yeah.
Yes, it's.
Twenty four million.
And as far as the village of Maranek share about one hundred thirty two million dollar cost. Uh the sharing of the projects is based on the. Gallons of water sold by the three members. In the case of the village of Maranek, you know, the share of that typically is around twenty seven or twenty eight percent. Uh so that hundred thirty two million uh cost translates to. A cost share for the village of approximately thirty six and a half million dollars. Uh so the Riley Lake Filter Plant really is the focus of the five year uh capital plan. We have some other projects, specific projects, and then some contingency. Uh the part plane water storage tank rehabilitation for two point one million uh village share, that's approximately six hundred thousand. Uh that's uh, I think the last of our seven. Uh water storage tanks that requires to rehab. Currently we're doing that. A rehabilitation to purchase water storage tanks and then part plane number. One or number two. The last series. Uh we're also putting in a chlorination system at shaft twenty two of Delaware Aqueduct. That's one of our two sources of water for the system, Riley Lake being the other one. Uh that project is expected to be approximately one million dollars. The share for the two marines about. Million dollars. Uh that project involves uh putting in a chlorination system to divide the appropriate contact time.
Yeah.
Uh for chlorine uh before it reaches the distribution system through the Evo Street.
This is because uh New York City is lowering the chlorine level.
That's correct, New York City has been lowering the amount of chlorine that it puts into the system on the front end. Uh they originally talked about eliminating it entirely, but they probably will maintain. Uh a small amount of glory, but. Uh nevertheless, it's not enough uh to provide the contact time that's required for our system, so we will need to. Uh make this improvement uh to the water distribution system. Uh we are working with uh the city of Yonkers uh on this project as well because uh we will be sharing. One of their facilities. Uh located near Chrisfield Road in Yonkers.
Is that because we have different standards from New York City or I mean, I don't understand if they if they if they're comfortable with a lower. Chlorine level, why are we?
Well, the reason uh that New York City is reduced, what they're doing is they're reducing. Further up in the aqueduct. And they're fluorinating lower down.
They're saving money.
Um. Not necessarily, we're just changing their operations. Because of the changes they've made. I'm sorry.
Do you do it at Yonkers? They shock it with chlorine at Yonkers?
Uh they they do uh their updated operational plans, we're not quite sure what. What else they're going to be doing, but actually in the aqueduct they do it a bit further up. Yonkers and then they had the hill view, there's a reservoir. Uh and then they have another water treatment.
So so our water comes from the um from west of the river then?
Yes, our water comes from. Pass goes in.
That's good stuff.
That's correct.
Well, I mean, it's depending where the program where the program is.
Yeah, the uh New York City uses a system to a very small extent.
Right, that's okay.
Uh and Riley also have another project related to a turbidity curtain and boom upgrade and replacement. But because of the severe weather. That we've had on the lake there. Over time, the turbidity curtain prevents debris and and other. Uh turbidity in the water. Particles, et cetera, getting into the intake of the system there. Uh it's been damaged, it needs to be replaced.
That's that's akin to. Watching.
And again, the building has to make sure that is best according to. Then in the uh contingency category. Non-specific projects. Uh we have various joint system projects or classified emergency contingency. We look at our the average spend that we've had over the last five or so years on various. Uh projects that come up, whether they're transmission mains or related to facilities uh that need to be. Upgraded or repaired in a significant way. Uh those find their way in, so we've allocated eleven million dollars to that. In the capital uh budget, which uh the village of Maranek shares about three million of that. Uh local distribution system projects for water main replacements for various reasons. Whether they were compromised or utilized. Or failed, uh we have a variety of those that come off, including our transite mains. Um we need to allocate thirteen point five in in the. Um the budget for that, and these are local projects that are occurring.
Those of you who are watching don't know what a transite main is, transite main is a wood main that was made out of asbestos. Back when they made pretty much everything out of asbestos.
Yes, and it's an asbestos.
Right, and when there's a break in one of these mains, uh Westchester County Department of Health requires us. To replace the whole name, you just can't fix the break.
Correct, we can't uh replace just.
Right.
Air just section.
This this is a major and we're working on it.
And and when there's a replacement, they tend to be five hundred feet.
Yeah.
Most times, a lot of times. Uh and uh they use those materials because they they're better in areas where the. The soil is corrosive, at least historically. So you'll find a lot of them along the sound shore. Uh in the case of local distribution system projects where those issues occur. Uh a hundred percent of the project cost is allocated to that member municipality. So you'll see that the percentage of the total. Capital project costs are is quite a bit higher for them to American because of the the number of failures that needs to be had. Other local system costs, we uh try to replace compromised or. Broken infrastructure of various types, whether it's valves. Uh in advance of paving projects in all three member municipalities, so that uh. We don't end up going out and digging up a partially paved where people always get really upset and just finally someone that happens. So we go out and identify issues in advance of that paving happening and then replace the infrastructure. When I dig into the second time, it occurring. Resurfacing costs is. A second. Uh so those are the elements of the five year capital plan at this point. Uh flipping to the uh. The next slide, which is number five. There's a summary of the water rate history and proposed increases. For New York City D E P. And for the village of Maranek specifically, so you see on since two thousand and seven. Uh the average rating increase from New York City is about seventy seven percent. It's really about eight point six percent. Ahead of that. And you also see uh around the year two thousand and ten that there was a. A significant rate increase that occurred in the village of Maranek that was.
Seventy five percent.
It was seventy five percent and that that occurred because the water was underpriced and trying to. You're trying to eliminate any issues as far as having the general fund have to. Support or generally taxpayers support the water system because our our goal is to make the water system uh sound efficient, at least in terms of. The revenue uh that's generated. Uh from the use of the water system supporting all the costs, which will be the operational costs as well as the debt service on. Very stressful projects. One other item that I that I didn't mention, you know, this makes you breathe again on slide number. Uh three, on the operational cost, uh there's also a mention of the potential for. Fines which would impact our operational costs. Uh we have been accruing fines related to the filter plant for some time with. Construction of it had been halted at one point. In the early two thousands. And that created a regulatory issue, uh we've accrued about sixty five million dollars of fines. Um the expectation is that um the regulations for these will waive most of those fines in favor of the. Capital projects that need meet those compliance objectives. Uh we do run out of. Two potential areas of fines now, the original one was from New York State. Uh we now have a potential federal fine, but it would fall into the same category of it hasn't been. The magnitude of what might be paid is still being discussed, but again, we're hopefully this will be resolved.
At a fraction of course.
Yes.
Uh I think if you look back also two thousand and thirteen. Uh in the water rates, the village of America reduced the water rate by sixteen percent two thousand and thirteen. Which I think. Is it was a regrettable regrettable occurrence?
Yes, it it uh. Uh there it was about that seventy five percent and that coming years early is extreme. What we found in reply that obviously. Got us to a sustainable level, that was it, so lowering the rate was not. It was not advised as well.
Yeah. And which brings us to what we have today.
Uh yeah, what we're what we're looking at. Currently, the weight increase is approximately fifteen percent. The other two member municipalities of the town of Maranek or the town of Harrison already. Increase their rates. Percent in one case, four point seven five percent. Uh the magnitude of the rate increase is necessary because. Other operational costs now that are running one bit higher, as mentioned previously. With respect to inflationary pressures and supply chain issues. The construction of the waves. So that's that's where we stand at this point, that fifteen percent uh proposed increase. Uh currently. Uh for a customer that uses a hundred thousand gallons of water with minimum irrigation. Uh is about eight hundred sixty six dollars after the rate increase. Uh without a hundred thirty more increase in that annual. Hundred and six dollars reports out to about three point five cents per day. But again, is a unnecessary thing to keep up with um the impending debt service and the the impact of. Inflation and supply chain issues. The cost of water, but again, I'll go back to my original slide. The uh when you look at the gallon of water at the. Nine tenths of a cent, uh it's still pretty economical.
I think your original slide though has decimal point. You pick yours. Yeah. Zero point zero zero nine?
Right, it's it's nine tenths. Yes, it's.
Here's the dollar, you're right, you're right, you're right.
What when did um the town of Harrison and the town of Maranek raise their rates just last?
Originally.
Uh. They raised one raised in August.
Thank you.
They could the board previously increased the sewer being back in March of April of this year. Uh one when they considered the budget. So that was already taken earlier this year.
So the village took the raises. At the water.
Yes.
All right, uh. Thank you, anybody have more questions for my friend with the virtual?
No, but I think it would be helpful for the board when it gets to. That the idiot rate to get more backup information as to how you arrive at fifteen percent. Okay, and if. You have, I mean, you're speaking that you would have that information. That that you've read your charts, it doesn't. You see the tremendous amount of money that has to be spent, but it doesn't go through how you get the calculations, so.
Right, and and they're they're obviously.
But I think I think to the extent that you can provide that to. Uh the board when they consider it would be helpful.
Yeah, this this will be on the agenda for in December, so if you could just get that for us. Just show show the work, as they used to say in the math, that's right.
Is it December twelfth or the?
Yeah, December twelve.
And and uh one one question, the 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 history of this intrigues me, the uh the big reduction. Um uh. Or the well first, the 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 big increase in twenty ten and the and the and the uh and the smaller reduction, but still sizable reduction. In twenty thirteen, what were the, I mean. Well, how would in a nutshell, how would you describe the forces at play there that would go that would have you go up seventy five percent?
Uh basically what we're looking at, and and this existed to an extent across all the member municipalities and and other places as well. Uh water has historically been underpriced. And as a result, uh in in some cases, the general taxpayer or the general fund. Need to uh fault in some of the costs associated with the water system.
So presumably, I mean, the probably had been underpriced the the previous years before that uh as well, so um essentially. Um it was being subsidized by the by the governments.
That's correct, it's subsidized by the general taxpayer. And and then, of course, you had increasing costs for maintaining and repairing the systems while it had. It had been. Uh not addressed for quite.
And what what word about this realization that it was.
Well, one, New York City increased its prices pretty dramatically earlier on relative to this.
Okay, I got it, I remember that story, yes.
Uh you know, generally, uh. A a look at the water system in general, this is the issue of the fact that. Many. These are the infrastructure major pieces have not been upgraded, repaired as necessary. Uh and then other projects to facilitate ultimately the compliance projects go through and get us out.
So this is sort of a general trend, we're following the leader on that.
Yes.
Okay, so on and 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 on uh in twenty thirteen, when it was reduced, what was what were the factors then?
That that was the work of one trustee uh who uh. You know, took it upon himself to uh do some calculations and decide that uh. But it 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 was the work of a village of American trustee. And that he his argument was that it had gone too far and he could save people money.
Okay.
We ended up not saving people much money and. That would have been the nest egg.
Understood, okay.
That we would now have.
The surplus, the surplus was growing and the robot was, and the and the big repairs that are happening now were not anticipated.
Yeah, well, they weren't just they they were anticipated twenty years ago.
You share the same reflection. Where we were and where we needed to be, and there was a pretty wide gap. So we needed to get from point A to point B.
Okay, understood, right, I I just wanted to un- understand uh you know, year to year how it happened.
Okay, thank you.
Thanks.
Thanks for all your help.
Thanks for waiting.
Okay, that's what I'd like to do, I we have Mister Desai on the phone to talk about the comprehensive plan. And then Ms. Jackson has been here for a couple of meetings, so I want to bring her uh issue up. Uh can we can we bring in Mister Desai? I'm just gonna make a, please can start Neil, I can have a quick stop.
Sure, um hello, everybody.
I can't hear you.
Where is he?
He's on Zoom.
Tales from Potsdam, no. Can you hear us, Neil? We can't hear you.
Yes, I can hear you.
I hear you over here somewhere, hang on.
No, I think I'll use.
Testing. Testing.
Neil, try again.
Testing, testing.
I hear something over here, but it's really low.
I'm sorry.
I remember Neil when you had dog hair.
I remember that too.
Two thousand and eleven, right?
Uh well, four years ago, I think is is when uh the genes started kicking in. Okay. Um thank you, everybody, uh Neil Deci from Hardisty in Hanover. Uh the I hope everybody had a good good Thanksgiving. Um I just uh I I want to talk about the survey, the comprehensive plan update, the survey that uh we that's currently online. And the schedule. Uh with respect to the survey, uh thanks for approving the the extra uh. Uh for for doing the survey, I think it's, as you all know, it's very important for the comprehensive plan to have. Its finger on the pulse of what's on people's minds and um. I think through this means we'll have a a more up to date. Uh sense of prior people's priorities um as well as uh in in a in a very, in a sort of quantifiable way. But we also have uh opportunities in the survey, if you've taken it yourself, uh room for qualitative feedback, which is also important.
Neil, have you done many responses?
Right, so so far we have four hundred responses. Um my minimum goal is uh about. Uh my minimum baseline is six hundred, I I that's like my minimum goal. And that's about ten percent of of households in in Maranek, there's about six thousand households or so. By six six between six to seven thousand. Um you could look at it that way as far as percentage goes, you could also look at it in terms of. I I well, I I think what else what I'd say is the the in in doing these surveys over the years. Um and and from my read in the literature about surveys, uh a response rate of 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 about twenty percent is a is a very decent. Is a decent response rate um with other communities um. You know, depending on the methods we've used, I've gotten as high as twenty twenty and thirty percent. Uh even with a town, you know, uh the village of Ridgewood, New Jersey, about twenty five thousand people. Uh we got about eleven percent response rate and even and we we had multiple means of reaching out. Uh we included sending a postcard to every single household. Um and so just want to demonstrate that it's it's uh it is very difficult uh in terms of getting responses, you'd think it would be a little easier to get. Up to forty percent, but it's uh I would say uh twenty percent is is a good solid response and the minimum I'm hoping for is ten, but. I've been working with uh uh Mr. Ingenito, the the uh public information officer. In promoting the survey, he's been very helpful in connecting up with C E C uh for the Spanish versions of survey and the English versions. Uh as well as the school districts and sending the email out to through the newsletter, uh posting on Facebook, so he's been very helpful in in doing that. Um and uh just a few other things about the survey is, you know, it's very, it'll be very important to cross tabulate data in the survey. Uh one of the questions asked about what neighborhood uh do you live in currently, so we'll be able to kind of gauge. Uh you know, I think it's be important to gauge, do a little ca- a little fine tuning and refining to see. Um uh what what kind of differences are in terms of priorities and and topics of concern among people in different neighborhoods? And also just to look at, you know, you'll get a sense of uh. We'll get a sense of which neighborhoods were well well represented in the survey and which which aren't, and if there are things we can do. Uh in in the time that we have to to try to uh improve uh uh. Percentage of respondents in certain places. And so that's the survey, so thanks, I appreciate that, and I think um it also it's makes makes me more comfortable and confident that. Uh the the work, the comprehensive plan will be be uh more reflective of of the current priorities. And also for for new board members that come along to show that, you know, we're we're we have a new, we we're we're using the data that we re- received. And the feedback from the prior prior meetings we've had, but also having this new source of data. And I'm able to share my screen, um let me show you. The the next part is just the the trajectory of all this, I have some specific dates and deadlines to share with you. Um this is the page, this is the second page of the. Uh the first page of this uh progress report is what you we've already seen, what we've talked about. Uh I wanted to focus in on this month, we launched this. We we aim to complete, I'm sorry, I think I went back. Uh we aim to complete the survey. Uh by uh probably by Friday, we'll look at how many responses we have. Uh and and you know, we'll see if we need to extend it for a couple more days and there if there are any other specific avenues for for getting the survey out. We'll I'll work with the public information officer of the village to to determine that. Uh so there is, you we may we may decide to go a few days past the first of December. Uh the important interim product of all this is a summary of the survey results that I would be submitting to uh you all. Um which I am proposing that we I would submit it to by the eighth of December. Uh and uh I I would want to. Take the opportunity to answer questions, explain uh what the what the results, what the results tell us. Have you uh uh answered, ask questions and make some other analysis about the data and the the planning. Uh to do that on the on the on the December twelfth work session. Um and then in terms of the moving on into the into the comp plan itself. Um propose submitting a a next draft of the comprehensive update about a month after that, so on January sixteenth. Um and uh that would be uh we would have a two week review period. Um and I think what it what it boils down to, I think if we kind of work backwards is we're looking at a. A pub- a public hearing in March. Uh and and so that's that's where we're at. We're at, oh, that's where that's where right now that the timing of of all this is is leading us to.
Are there are there any avenues that haven't been tried to uh increase participation?
Um well, there's uh we're gonna look at uh, I think today. Well, there's, we're gonna look at, I think today, the. So I believe it was yesterday, the Mamaroneck Schools in their weekly newsletter posted. Posted something about the survey, which just recently got us a lot more responses and I expect more responses to be coming in tonight and tomorrow. The same will be done with Rhine X schools. On in tomorrow's newsletter that goes out. There's, I think, I think with respect to, we've covered a lot of ground, I'll say. I think the the few other things to explore are, I think. If there's a, I think, looking at some of the Facebook pages, some of the Facebook, looking, I need to look back at what. What Robert had had posted on on their Facebook, making sure we've we've. Covered the social media angle, I think Instagram, we did, well, the village doesn't have one. I know there's certain groups in the village, like the community environment that have Instagram access and we can can we can post, we can ask to post the survey. On those, but we we have covered a lot of ground, if there's any any suggestions or thoughts or questions about. What we have done or what what we haven't done, I, you know, feel free to to ask that. But we've covered a lot of ground with with, oh, we also posted flyers at businesses on Mamaroneck Avenue, at the train station. With the Q R code and both Spanish and English versions of the flyers in in and. Prominent places throughout town, I know, I think in the village hall. The Public Information Office are posted as well, so we've we've done up, we've 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 done a pretty broad brushed. Array of promotions, there's always other things we can continue to do. To make sure that we're reaching.
Do we have any mailings going out from the village? Shortly or?
No, not until the summer, but we are doing a. Wide text. With our list. Which I gave Robert approval today.
About this.
Yep, about this, so it's the same as. Some people get texts about the email blast, the e-newsletter, so we're doing the same with that. We haven't done that yet.
Okay, but we're not sending out tax bills at this point.
No. Water, right.
Yeah, I think. The water works, I don't know, but I'm not sure what their. Their timeframe that is.
Yeah.
Is if you want the survey.
We typically don't jump in there.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. All right.
May I, anybody else?
You go ahead.
Yeah, I have a question, but before before I get to the question now. Let me just say I'm happy to see this get to the finish line, which I really hope it is. Happy to have kickstarted this process six years ago. When I joined the board six years ago, it had been five years. Since the plan had been finished and the plan, the previous plan called for it to be updated every five years. So definitely, and it probably it's clear by now that we can live without an updated comprehensive plan. Probably doesn't mean much, we're still here, we still flood, we still have other problems, but. I do think it is, it would have made our lives better because it's a more organized. I think thinking and analysis, government for everything. So as as you, you know, push this last effort. I'm gonna remind you a couple of things that I was stressing on. First. The the village character has always been very important in our neighborhoods. And all of that is to know. You know, how to move forward with with progress or with the improvements the community wants. And through this six years, I've seen the difficulty of upgrading our infrastructure, number one. Sewage, water, water rates. Pavings and it's cost a lot, fortunately, our finances have been held and we've been able to to do all that. But I do think that. We could have with with the priorities, because the comprehensive plan is about priorities. And actually, the previous one had four, but missed one very important one, was was important environment and sustainability, he just mentioned it. And resilience and flooding, it did mention it, but it didn't really give it. The the, you know, the depth and the tools that exist. So as no, I know you're twisting it now towards resilience. And we all applaud that. But my my point is, just get it done done and 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 in it. Be very careful or be mindful to keep that village character, for example, even with with our with our. With, well, we need to keep it, for example, I know. Westchester County can barely manage our our sewage. Right, so as we have upgraded, there's more flows, but we're barely there complying, actually, it's been six years trying to. Check, check the list that we're complying, so also be careful with with some of those. Limitations or constraints that may kind of now seem to be fading, but are still there, so. Keep that those in mind, and also very important with flooding, we've been work, talking and talking, we keep talking, but it's only those. Documents with their with with their. Actions that get us there, so more than more than the comprehensive plan. I liked what we did many and for several times now, it's there's a list of actions to do, the follow up. That was done almost unfinished by the time we were in the pandemic and we went through it that summer. So it's very just just clean that up and my, you know, my, one of the things I want you to remember is. Have that next to the plan when you throw it out to the trustees, right? With, because that was a lot of work. And finishing again with planning, because I I I have somebody here looking at me and I when I joined six years ago, I went straight to the flood committee. They volunteers, they know, they know, and those committees are the ones that know where we lack. Where administration lacks, even despite our best effort, even the the by the best intentions for the. Mayor, the trustees, we need to work collectively here and we need to work collectively with them, so my question to you after this long rant is. Have you talked to all them, have you finished, because I know you're talking to them, have you finished talking to them? Get their input, because in addition to the six hundred and hopefully you get more. You get to a thousand or more, those are volunteers that also connect to more people, so finish the round, are you close to that finish line? Are you happy with the input and how can you make it even better, because those. The input from the planning board, zoning board of appeals, flood mitigation, all the other committees, how is that finishing off and with that I. Close.
That's been the bulk of the work that I've been doing so far. Since we restarted the process was engaging all the all the other committees. You know, I see them as both, like you said, they're volunteers, but they're they're they they know their. Topics very well, they're going to be implementation partners. And so I wanted to get a sense from each group, what 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 are they thinking in terms of big picture? You know, big picture investments or or actions for the next, you know, five years, and so. I've I have, I've met with every every committee that I, you know, Parks and Rec. The Committee for the Environment, you you named them, met them, the Flood Mitigation Committee, unfortunately, that last Sunday meeting on Zoom, I wasn't able to get chimed into. But I've been in conversation with Tony Galber, I think that's the the last group that I need to just get a get into a meeting with. Just to and and they have their, they have their whole holistic plan, they call it, in their agenda, so I've been staying on top of that. And that's gonna be very important to to, I just want to sit and talk with them about about that holistic plan, because. There are many elements of that that the comprehensive plan can support, so yeah, I would say that work is wrapping up. And and then this is the broader, the survey represents the broader engagement of of public. As as you know, so.
And that survey is online in the village of Mamaroneck website, if folks want to take it. Gander at it and please fill it out if you haven't already. And I will send it out to my newsletter. To try and boost participation. And based on the board, have any questions for our friend Neil? No, Neil, you you have. You have a day's work ahead of you. We we as as trustee to four pointed out, we want to get this done. And get, you know, as a as a working, living document in this community. So please. Work post haste.
Okay, I'm looking forward to completing it too. Thank you, take care.
Thank you, Neil. Pardon me. Chase, we did that. We want to do Glendale Road. In the town of Harrison, no backup, just that this is the infamous road to nowhere.
Where we're saying, right?
It's a one D. Because Peggy's been waiting and she sat for a whole other meeting. Glendale Road juts into the Mamaroneck River. It's a. It's a peninsula in Harrison. The Harrison. Has. Here to pour, not. Wanted to remove because they feel that it benefits their community. In various different ways and they've had a couple of engineers' reports. And I have. Had discussions with members of the flood committee with the former mayor Belmont. And the current mayor of Harrison, Rich. And they both came out, looked at it, and they. Were reluctant to do anything, is the best way of putting it. I do want to point out that we are partner with Harrison in building a filtration plant. And that filtration plant is before the Harrison. Planning Board. And so far Harrison has been a good partner with us, even though their residents or or. Very influential and loud segment of their residents are opposed to the filtration plant. But so far, hit a four, they've taken. You know, in my estimation, some brave votes, so I just I just wanted to throw that out there and thank them for their partnership. In working through a very difficult situation with us. But. I'm open to any ideas or suggestions that the board may have about Glendale Road.
I think Peggy has had some. Conversations with members of. Their counterparts in Harrison, and maybe she could enlighten us as to what they are, please.
Mayor, thank you, board, I'm wearing two hats tonight, one is still my last probably duty on a flood mitigation committee. Before I timeout, so representing the board and also representing my neighborhood and all my neighbors on the due flood. We have, I've been in contact with Rob Wyder, who is a member of the newly created and once again by committee. He has meetings to his flood committee. Members of the community in Harrison have now, as a result of Ida, started to flood. And we think Road to Nowhere is now farming them negatively. So what we're like hoping to present is that. Village of Mamaroneck, the town of Harrison jointly. Go to the county, there is flood mitigation money available in the county. We'd like to propose we do a joint presentation to the county. However, we would ask for a study to be launched. No one wants to hurt anyone downstream of which one back the road. We'd like to find out based on damages sustained at Ida, which were far greater than in two thousand and seventy. If there's an opportunity with the money available, the county will both do a study and based on that study. Perhaps finally get this road trend back and whatever it should arise, it should be done downstream, it should be beneficial for everyone. So I know Jerry is tirelessly trying to get Harrison to respond and they have basically not responded. Perhaps if we bring Catherine Parker and George Wadamer, we might know. But this is a project, this is low hanging fruit, this is something to be able to get done and benefit our residents. And just in Harbor Heights alone, I don't have to count on Harrison's side. Twenty one people had water in their living quarters as a result of Ida, whereas in two thousand and seven. Only five did, and the studies that Harrison did in two thousand and eleven were using. The figures from two thousand and seven storm, so they're basically outdated. It's time to do an H N H study, we believe both on the flood committee. And and Rob from the Harrison committee believes he and his group want to do that. So it's just, we try and bring this up and get it moving forward.
Jerry, who'd you talk to in Harrison?
I emailed the mayor and I spoke to the engineer mayor.
What did the engineer say?
The engineer said that it's not a priority for the community.
Okay, I I will have another conversation with the mayor. I think I think it's a good idea to reach out to Catherine and George. Have you reached out to them?
Like me?
I have not.
I've had conversations with each of them. You know, in passing, there are a lot of things that should be done, but I haven't, we haven't said anything from the committee, we sent it right to the board. And haven't engaged them in all of this.
Catherine and George have both said in my conversations that if Harrison would join. In the approach for the study, it's slam dunk and can be done. I think the money is available and can be committed immediately. But that that doesn't, you know, the study will say either it will help or harm.
Well, let's let's see if we can get Harrison to do it, but and you don't know, you don't know what the impact in Harrison is, I mean, because that that seems to be where your leverage. Your best leverage will be if you've got.
Thank you, that's a good idea.
And then and then maybe you could get a little publicity and.
A joint flood committee meeting, Harrison and.
I mean.
Invite county officials.
Maybe we should bring the engineers as well. So that there's. Because there's an issue with the sewer line.
Right.
I think it's causing a problem.
Well, just the idea was originally Jared had trimmed it back. Five feet in front of the sewer line so that it wouldn't impact the sewer line, because that's really a Harrison issue and they did not want to pay for it. Two thousand. I don't remember when it was nine, ten, eleven, twelve, when we proposed this last. But if we keep it away from the sewer line. Shouldn't affect at all.
They might not agree, but I understand what you're saying. All right, I mean, I will reach out to them and I think we should propose a meeting between the two. Light committees. Or at least the chair. Somebody have a conversation here.
A meeting of the two committees would be would be something that would be hard to ignore.
Can you perhaps extend the invitation to someone who will know all of the young committee, but has interest in it?
Yeah.
The meeting will be absolutely.
I appreciate your time, thank you very much.
You won, have a good evening. All right, I'm gonna break at seven thirty. Real quick, we have some easy stuff that's on this night. License agreement with Life Church, Gary, do you want to just explain it briefly?
Mayor.
Because they seem like they've done with their construction now, pretty much.
It seems like it, the issue is that there are five parking spots. The issue is that there's five parking spots. Behind Life Church, it seems to be their property. And we currently have paid parking in those five spots. So what they've asked is for. Twelve to fifteen. Parking permits for their staff on Saturdays, because the staff comes in on Saturday and of course Sunday. In exchange for us to continue to maintain those parking spots.
So they get. Parking passes and we still maintain the spots.
That's correct, and we continue to collect off the metered. Parking.
How many spots do they have?
Five.
Maybe we get twelve permits that would be good, we can't just limit it to Saturday and Sunday, they get twelve parking spaces.
Nobody comes in Monday to Friday.
The proposal is twelve to fifteen.
Twelve to fifteen is what he asked for, yeah. We're pushing for fifteen, whatever the board wants to, but the request was twelve to fifteen.
I don't, I mean, I'm so, I'm not sure what the benefit to us is, because Saturday and Sunday, we basically lose twelve spaces versus losing only five.
We don't charge on Sunday.
So it's just on Saturday.
Right, but it's 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 not the, it's not the financial benefit, it's the if there's a complaint that there's not enough parking, so giving up. You know, I think it's giving up village spaces.
So then you can give back the five spaces, that's the alternative.
Can we do a little financial?
So we 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 collect on average, right, from those spaces, those spaces are closest to the walkway. But we would collect on average when we're collecting six days a week, about fifteen dollars per day from those spaces.
But there's no reason why people who work who work there and you have a parking permit can't use those spaces because they're closest to the church. But there's no reason why people who work, who work there and you have a parking permit can't use those spaces because they're closest to the church.
They have to pay.
Not if we give them twelve permits. I'm just saying those.
That doesn't mean they get those spaces.
Well, necessarily they could, they could park in Phillips Park or Phillips Park Road anywhere they want.
Right.
But they don't have to take those spaces.
But we're, but I think.
What's that?
They're part-time. They're not going to be there at the same time. They just have the number of staff. What they have to do is. They have, they want to give their staff members instead of taking those parking spots back, which they're amenable to. We would lose the revenue. Right? Is that they would have parking for their employees, which are, they come in and out on those two days, which are weekend.
They come in and out, I mean, Sunday is sort of a wash.
It's just Saturday.
It's just Saturday. They can, if we give them a parking permit, they can park longer than two hours in those spaces.
Yeah.
So basically we might have. Twelve people parking for longer than two hours for free.
You have them for working whatever their shift is. That's true.
And they could be utilizing those five spaces that are closest to the walkway.
Right, but we'd be losing the revenue on those five spaces.
A thousand seventy per space?
Say that again?
A thousand seventy per space per year. It's not eleven, is it? It's approximately twelve hundred dollars per year per space.
So. And how much would the parking permits cost? I mean, because obviously their, their employees, I mean, what other, what, I mean, I understand that. We're getting five parking spaces back, but what other businesses do we need to give parking permits to?
No, just them. Because they own property that we have five spaces on.
And there's nothing else. I mean, we're pretty sure that we're not utilizing anybody else's parking for this.
No, I'm not sure, but I haven't done an extensive search.
Jerry, can I, oh, may I, oh, may I?
Sure.
Um, are you sure? These people wouldn't all be there at the same time, actually, would they?
They would be there for whatever shift they come in. If they come in for cleaning, if they come in for setting up the church, if they come in for whatever they come in. And then most of the staff doesn't even come in on, on Sunday, the way the pastor explained it to me. It's just basically residents who, I mean. Congregation comes in.
So maybe it's a limited number of, of generic passes.
It wouldn't be generic.
That you, that you give to, give to the church and say, you know, here's. Eight of them.
It would only be.
You give them to whoever you need.
Yeah, it would always be for, it would only be for Phillips Park Road.
Yeah.
It would only be for those spots. Behind Life Church. In and around that area, not the prime spots in front on Maranic Avenue, but only for Phillips Park Road.
But the church would give them to their employees, right?
Yeah.
Right? And then take, take the part, the, the, take the, the pass back when their shift is over or whatever.
Well, they would, however they want to administer it. I don't know.
I mean, I think you'd want that. I don't think you'd want, want to give ten people unlimited parking in Phillips Park.
You know, the, the easier solution, if the board is uncomfortable with giving passes, is we just take the property, we just give them the property back and we lose five spots. That's fine too.
And how much are the passes, Jerry?
Six twenties. How much are the? We're not giving general, we're not giving GP passes. We just, they have to park at one of the spots behind Phillips Park Road at one of the meters. We wouldn't be giving them parking passes to park throughout the.
We have, if they were to buy a pass, they would have.
You can't buy a pass. It's a metered spot.
This, this is in lieu of us using, let's just break this down. We have five spots we've been using forever, but it's actually on their property.
Right.
Okay. We've got away with that for a long time.
A while.
Uh, and. Now they're saying, you know, you can keep those five spots, but we want something in return. So this is in lieu of.
That's correct. And it would not be general parking permits. They wouldn't be where they can park in any parking lot. They would only be back there.
But basically they can park on Phillips Park Road. Six days a week. We can't say it's only good for Saturdays.
I would say it's only good.
Can we do that? So it's just good for Saturdays?
I'm the one who issues the parking passes.
And it doesn't have to be issued to specifically to a car.
No. Couldn't do that. I could do that. But then when every time their employee changes.
I'm just, that's my, because typically parking passes go with the car.
And, and they're going to give us a piece of paper that says that we can keep the spaces.
Whatever the lawyers want.
That's the agreement.
Bob wants a space.
If I have a.
The issue in parking passes, not pieces of paper.
I have a general permit. How much does that cost?
Six twenty-five.
And can I park that on Phillips Park Road?
Not that. No, you cannot. Because you can park in the lot near Phillips Park Road, but not in Phillips Park.
You park in a GP space. But you know, the, the document's going to be the agreement that's attached to the work session, which sets forth the terms and conditions.
And it expires when? Does it have an expiration date?
Try it for a year and if it's doesn't, if it's not mutually beneficial, give it up.
Could.
The problem is. There are other. People who own property in that area. That have parking spaces. I don't know if we have meters on them or not. But it doesn't mean that any. One of them can't ask for the same thing or do something like that. I, I think it's bad precedent to set and I'm. You know, and I don't think the village is getting much out of it. We have to get back to five spaces that we shouldn't have in the first place. That should be done.
So not only should we give back the five spaces, but we should investigate to see the other people's spaces that we're using to give them back as well.
Whatever it is, it not.
There's no, there's no reason to go there.
This is an in lieu of, and it, and it benefits us to have five spaces for our community. You know, and we, we talk about not having parking and then, you know, we're going to. But five days a week, you know, we're going to have. You know. This isn't going to be an issue. We're still going to have those five spaces. We're going to get the revenue from those five spaces and people are going to be able to shop. From those five spaces.
Typically, no parking back there on Saturdays or limited parking, but Monday to Friday, there's ample parking.
Right, but on Saturdays. All right, so on Saturdays, I'm just, I mean, it would be nice to know whether this is going to. Trigger a cascade of other people with the same question, with the same situation, but Saturday is the busiest day back there.
Yes.
We're losing five spaces, you know, we're, we're, we're gaining five spaces six days a week. But we're losing ten to twelve spaces on Saturday.
You're losing, you're losing, you would lose the five spaces that are preferred and parked in the most because it's right next to the walkway.
Right, but it's likely the employees are going to get there and park there anyway because it's the most convenient weather, right? So you can't, I mean, what I, what I'm saying is. The Saturday seems to be the most, the busiest day for parking. We're going to lose, and that's, that's the day that we're going to give, we're going to give away ten spaces. And lose five.
So I'm bringing the request.
But they're asking for twelve to fifteen spaces.
Whether we give back the spaces or we give them parking passes.
I, I don't care.
What's the difference to me?
Try for a year and give them ten. I mean, you know.
If they'll take ten, I, I mean, I think if we do it, we have to do it for a short period of time to see whether this is beneficial. If we do it.
I, but, but yeah, tell them, tell them they can have ten and, and, and we'll try for a, a, whatever the, you know, I would say a year. That gives enough to give it enough time to.
Whatever you agree to, I will. All right, so is there consensus to do ten for you?
I, I'm, I, I think it's a bad precedent. I think that it opens the door that we, we have any of the others. We don't get any real financial gain out of it.
I'm just trying to do some quick. Right now, five spaces is going to generate. Fifty percent occupancy rate. Basically five thousand eight hundred fifty dollars a year. If, if the concern is. All fifteen vehicles being at the meters. On Saturday, you know, using the same. Variables or fifty percent occupancy rate. That's about. Three thou, just shorter four thousand dollars in revenue for one year. So. You know, there is a net positive by, you know, maintaining the lease.
I'd take give them ten. I mean, they, they asked for fifteen. We don't have to give them fifteen because they asked for it.
And as far as the, whether there are other. You know, encroachments that we may have. You know, that would require us getting a survey and, you know. The deed we're part of the property this morning, but surveying Phillips Park Road.
Yeah, I understand that, but I, my concern.
Could be, but I mean, it could be tremendous.
Your, your math and the, on the three thousand. Is assuming fifty percent occupancy.
And that was the same revenue. There's the same assumption or fifty percent occupancy rate for those five spaces.
I understand that, but there's a difference because. This, they're asking for twelve to fifteen spaces because they're going to be having their people there on Saturday.
Not all day, but even if it was all day.
These are part-time workers.
These are part-time workers.
So, you know, they're, they're not going to be there, you know, after five o'clock in the evening when people are parking.
The meters are in effect from eight AM to six PM, which is hours. So, you know, five hours times seventy-five cents an hour, three dollars and something.
Three, three seventy-five.
Seventy-five times fifty-two is.
A, a lot.
Even assuming that type of, what the Saturday revenue would bring in. You know, we, I believe we would earn more strictly by, you know, maintaining those spots.
Okay, I, I, I think there's at least the consensus to change the resolution to ten spots in a trial period for one year.
Okay. Consensus.
So it's, it's on for tonight. The other thing that's on for tonight is supplemental appropriation for Santa Claus. Santa Claus does not end with an E.
I refer to it as the Santa experience.
That's the Santa Claus.
The Santa Claus holiday event at Harbor Island Park on, on, okay, could you just explain what's going on here?
So we have an award winning Santa experience holiday event that we put on at Harbor Island Park. Which continues to grow year after year after year because the number of participants is really exploding. And so. Yep. So we spent approximately two weeks setting up for this event. And since we've used a lot of overtime to perform other events throughout the year. We need an appropriate appropriation. From appropriated balance of thirty-five thousand dollars.
Okay. Well, we're also appropriating a lot of. There's a lot of other overtime that's, that's in the order of the bills in addition to thirty-five thousand. And I, I'm kind of, I'm kind of God smack that it's. It's the overtime was supposed to start today. It's thirty-five thousand dollars. For overtime. For an event that runs for two days. Like I understand that we did this during COVID. There was just no, we needed to social distance. And I understand that it won an award, but it, it's just a, it's a ginormous expense for a two-day event. And we didn't plan for it.
There's a revenue to it too.
But not, not, not offset like, like what it is, but if you want to cancel it, we can go ahead and cancel. What I, I, I was the appropriation so we can have it.
I understand, but looking for the appropriation so we can have it. Days before it's happening. Really puts this board in a bad situation and I feel like it wasn't good planning. Thirty-five thousand dollars is a lot of overtime for an event that doesn't bring in much money. And you know, when I checked today, the, the car thing didn't have a lot of people sign up for it. So now I'm sure that will change, but it's, it's limited to what, a hundred and fifty or two hundred at the most? Two hundred, so that's two thousand dollars. It's the most revenue we're going to get from, from this. And I feel like we're being asked to fund something at the very last minute. That's an awful lot of money. And if we don't do it, we'll be the Grinches.
I don't want you to be the Grinch. I just want you to, a yes or a no. That's it. That's all I want.
It's, it's, I understand your concern, but it, it is what it is and it's, it's, you know.
Thousand dollars is an entire year's salary for some people. I, I just feel like it's our. You know, everybody in this room is going to pay a lot more taxes because of this. I, I just, I feel like we have to.
Really?
They've already paid the taxes. Out of appropriated fund balance. That we have saved.
Fund balance and we've done that at every meeting since we adopted the budget. And I'm not.
We've been approving everything.
Well, I, I haven't. And this is, you know, I've said I'm not doing this anymore until we actually figure out what we're doing with the capital plan. We're just ending my, I understand this isn't a capital project. This is overtime for a really fun event. But you know. Sometimes you can't do the really fun things because it's not in your budget and.
It's fireworks in the fourth of July.
Well, we did two sets of fireworks this year.
Okay, so I mean, and this is.
But we, but, but we didn't budget for it. And I think this is part of it. I mean, I, you know, I don't know what everybody else's financial circumstances are, but you know, like we have a family budget. And if there's an unexpected expense in the family budget, then something else has to get flipped. And something else has to get reduced and. I, I just feel as though. This event has.
We just approved an appeal of forty-seven grand.
Yeah, that's, and that's, that's litigation.
Yeah.
We should just, whenever we had asked to spend something, we should just approve it. We have a budget. We're not following our budget. I mean, that's something that, that Victor and I worked very hard on when we first both got on the board to try and, and to try and really. You know, work with controller and, and, you know, learn the requirements and make sure we stuck to our budget.
And next time we have a little bit more of a heads up, please.
Sure.
Thank you.
All right. One minute, I, I do have. I'm going to put it a little different. Uh, but because I. I think we've, we've worked very hard. For years to have philosophies and principles of how you do the budget and analyze them. And it's key. It's one of the things that the, this board has to do. The other very important one that has been put in place is that revenue expense control. And for residents, if you want to know exactly where we are every two weeks. Uh, since about a year ago, two years ago.
Two years ago, yeah.
They put together a report, so they give you exactly the expenses and the, and the income and. Every month, I believe is, is the result of operations. So you can see how much we've taken from surface. That. With that, we, we can make very informed decisions. What, what concerns me, this, with this one that hit over the weekend, that's how. Our village works is that if I look at the expense report. It's not in the, in the breakdown. So it's not even in the, in the breakdown. And. Again, this taking for surplus. So I'm not going to say yes or no, but I think this requires this further analysis.
We don't have.
Meet again. No, it, it, because that's my, the principle is things need to be reviewed. We spend, we take two months to review the budget. It's for a reason. And we spend a lot of time on why this account, why that, and we need to balance then things throughout. Or at least make a decision, you know, this is going to cost us. So let's do three fireworks or four. Those decisions add up and that I think that's I probably were. Nora wanted to get, but I get it to it from a different angle. I think. If you want to discuss that, discuss it further, have another meeting, but if, if on the eve of, of, of us closing. We have items that we haven't even discussed that we put on the agenda. It's a rush decision. I, I, I don't think it should be done this way. It should be done properly. You can meet again or you can meet with us if you need us, but I, I don't feel comfortable with, because I haven't analyzed the data. If you look at the numbers, I tried. Thought of crunch the overtime. It doesn't make sense. It actually runs. A foul or I had some certain other questions. It doesn't have the enough time. For me to make this kind of, it's thirty-five thousand dollars for a surplus. And I did work very hard with Nora and Nora, we push it and thanks to the staff and I'll say something at the end. When I close, that, that that is what has been helping us. Because when the, when the crisis hits, COVID hit or when the flood hits and you have to take two or three or five million dollars, they need to be somewhere. You're not going to run to the bank. So that has been the philosophy. So it all adds up. I think you need to have a further analysis of, of this. Expenditure and then make a decision then. If we do this, we don't do that, but it has to be looked at entirely. It's not just one, one, one event to say, okay, we're going to make, make this shuffles and. Probably going to cut something. So I think that's a decision that you probably need to make.
Okay. I make a motion that this goes on tonight's regular. Agenda. Second. We'll be called role.
Well, but that's not how it works.
It is how it works. Call the roll. Trustee is young?
Yes.
Trustee. Matches?
No.
Trustee Lucas?
I'll put it on for more discussion, but I, I, you know, I've pretty much made my point. I'm very concerned about this last minute request. It, this isn't a good, this isn't good planning and this is what's happened every meeting since we adopted our budget.
So it's a no?
Is it a no? I mean.
We can discuss it again. We can discuss it.
Vote on it.
So yes or no?
We're not, it, all we're voting on. We're not, it, all we're voting on, all we're voting on is to have discussion about it at our regular meeting.
I don't know where you've been.
What are you voting on?
Putting this on the agenda.
Exactly, I'm not wanting to support this, all I'm voting is to, if I vote yes, it's just, is to have further conversation about it, but I'm not committing myself to saying yes.
Okay. And I, uh, keep on roll.
Not for today, review it later, tomorrow or the afternoon, not for today. Have a full decision on this.
You just, you know, you knew this was coming, you could have asked these questions of them beforehand.
You know, we got this, we got this on Wednesday.
You got this on Wednesday, yeah, and it's, it's. It went out Wednesday.
We didn't work Friday.
Mayor Murphy? Yes.
The point isn't asking more questions today, my point is. A thirty-five thousand dollar overtime request with other overtime for the rec department and other expenses related to this. Make me think that this has been thought about for longer, and I don't know why the Board of Trustees is getting it with. With literally at the very last minute, and that's, that's what continues to happen and it's not okay.
My, my point was you had it on Wednesday.
Yes, and Tom, you know, I.
Yeah, we all had stuff going on.
Yeah, I had it on Wednesday, and staff wasn't in Thursday or Friday or.
As they answer emails and they, they answer.
So, you know what, Tom? You know?
I'm sorry, it just, you know.
You know.
To bring it up now without ever giving them a chance to get you the information that you say you need.
It's, it, it's not the information, it's thirty, thirty-five thousand.
Doesn't matter what information.
Thirty-five thousand dollars that we're being asked to spend the day this expense starts, because the overtime was going to be starting. Bill today for an event that's happened in two weeks, it's really, really late and it's not, it's not good planning, it's not how we should be budgeting. And it's not, it's not fair to the Board of Trustees to not, this. If, 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 if nobody knew until Wednesday that it was going to be thirty-five thousand dollars in overtime, then that's another problem too.
Hundreds of kids.
There's a memo dated November twenty-first in the packet, it's not like we didn't have. A memo, we did have a memo explaining what the situation was.
Didn't go, it didn't circulate, Jerry.
This didn't, it was in the packet.
On Wednesday?
Yeah.
Okay, but I'm saying, you're asking, you sent something out on the Wednesday before Thanksgiving for a thirty-five thousand dollar overtime approval on a Monday.
And no one asked a question until tonight.
Yeah.
Not one person, there's five of you up there, not one.
You know what, Jerry, because I, because I spent today preparing for tonight's meeting, I didn't spend all. For tonight's meeting, well, you know.
Can we give you the agendas on Monday morning then, because it helps us.
Or, or if there's going to be a big expense. Or a heads up.
Wouldn't we do that?
Or a heads up.
This is a heads up, it's in the agenda.
It's in the agenda, it's a heads up on Wednesday, you had the heads up November twenty-first, maybe it should have been shared, like, you know, the Santa experience. Is going to be a lot more expensive, we just want you all to know that, are you still on board with it?
We gave it to you on Wednesday, not on Friday when we normally give you, we give it to you two days before.
You're, I'm, I'm sorry, I should have spent Thanksgiving working.
Oh, come on.
But this, it's exactly the kind of thing you're saying, I'm not talking, I'm, what I'm, what I'm talking about is. What I'm talking about is we can consistently. Put into situations where we are being asked to spend a lot of money. That's not in the budget and we're just draining our, we're draining our reserves and. You know, I've asked consistently to have a, a meeting where we talk about the capital budget and that seems not, not, that seems not to happen. I'm hoping with our new board will be a priority. You know, we should have been doing it in the past six months, we're six months into our budget.
Well, that's been, the board was dysfunctional, that's why.
So you and Tom weren't willing to do it either, so. I gave up trying to schedule because you were too busy to do it. So, while I'm, all I'm saying is, we met, we have a budget. It seems right now that the budget is just a suggestion and we keep getting different requests at the last minute and it's not sustainable.
Also, so the process is the Board of Trustees will vote no on any request that the staff brings. That's in, that's above and beyond the budget, that's fine too. It is fine, we have no problem with that, we have no problem when we bring it to you, if you vote no, we have no problem. There's no issue, no hard feelings, nothing.
I'm not, I, I'm glad there are no hard feelings, I think, I think. But I think, I think the point is, we all need to be working together and pulling together at, at, at a better, as a better team. And these kinds of last minute requests without the backup that Victor asked for, it, it can't.
Just now?
I mean, you know.
All right, it, it's on the agenda tonight. Hold your heart desires and we move on.
Yeah, and it's okay, it's just an event.
Make a motion, we adjourn for a sustenance break and I'll explain to folks what's going.
Well, I, I, I'd like to address at least, at, at least one, one of the, uh, the, the, uh.
Which ones?
The, uh.
Update on Taylor's Lane?
Yeah, yeah, the, uh, the Committee for the Environment, which is, which is an, an active committee that's done a lot of work and, and, and needs to respond to at least one thing. One of the four or five things they've asked for, um, can we get a, a reporter, where Taylor's Lane is, we'd, they'd like to know. Uh, um, well, you know, when we could do something with it.
We, we're still working on the site management plan, we're, uh, reading final comments from the DEC. I know it's, it's like a work record with that, but unfortunately, we've had to, uh. Uh, beg and plead with them to get back to us, we've actually had to.
Master plan?
No, we're site manager.
Site management.
It's for the ongoing.
Do we have, do we have a timeframe?
I am hoping within the next couple of weeks, uh, but like I said, I've had to, unfortunately, I've had to go to our state legislature. Twice over the last couple of years to get the DEC to get back to us.
They have to give us money back eventually.
This is, we've gotten the money, this is now just the last, kind of the final administrative hurdle, is getting the site management plan approved. Um, it did, it did tie into one of the other items, the nice agenda, which is, they want us to make, they want us to have a plan there.
Can you, can you get that information to the Committee for Environment tomorrow? Okay, okay. While we're on Taylor's Lane? Taylor's Lane Site Encroachment.
Yes.
There's new information?
There is, so this.
And sorry, you can continue, but then I'll, I'll come back to this story after, but it's not the end.
Situation where it appears that Mango Nursery is encroaching on the village's property. That issue was raised several weeks ago by the village manager. Uh, I received a call from Mang, from the lawyer for Mango Nursery saying, hey, wait a minute. You don't own that property. So we agreed, the village manager and I agreed with them, and you've given the opportunity to show us that we didn't own that property. And today I received the result of a title investigation, which on its face shows that the town of Ride owns that. Property.
And not us.
And not, not the village, I have not had the opportunity to investigate it yet or to evaluate it, I just came in this afternoon. But, uh, that's what I need to do and we will be able to report back hopefully, uh, at the next meeting.
Thank you, and Victor, why don't you finish up?
Well, just, just. My, my question is, I had asked for, uh, for a, the. Site plan that showed the entire Taylor's Lane area, including that, and I said, I wanted to see the actual. Plot plan for that particular parcel. And to date, I have not received it from the village manager, did receive some comments from him, but not the, not the.
Let's go address that, trustee matches, there is a survey that I have seen. That shows that the property is owned by the village, there's a fence around.
I don't care, if there's a survey for the survey that shows it, then you send it to the board, period. It's not, it's not a big issue.
The board would have to ask for that, wouldn't they?
I asked for it.
Well, yeah, but you. But you're just one, one vote.
We need to vote every time anybody on the board wants to do something. Come on, give me a break.
Victor, what were you going to say?
Just that, that's, when I joined the board six years ago, I went to, could directly to the Committee for the Environment. And that was one of the first questions I went to ask and. Uh, the village manager at the time facilitated me three boxes and we went through it all. And there was about, we were very close, six years ago. Well, sometimes with brownfields, it is very difficult. So I encourage you to keep doing this, but it's been a lot of work trying to do in the middle of all this. There, there was a final study that they required with DEC, it's very hard and I've been actually trying to. Be stronger on staff and stronger and they keep checking and checking, it is. It has been a lot of work to probably get to the, can I finish?
Okay, yeah, I, I understand, it's tough.
The point is, it's been a lot of work to just get to this finish line and they'll. I mean, probably kind of finish it soon, but, uh, once you have that, then you can decide what project to, to put on. Six years ago, we want, we wanted to go in and start with, with planning on solar panels, some of the ideas you have now. I think going back and analyzing some of the work that was done previously will help you and other members, uh, you know. Fast track and, and get on top in, instead of starting from, from, you know, from, from zero.
So, in my last conversation with our consultant, uh, from November sixteenth. He said, I'm happy to chat, chat, Dan. DEC told me last week, so sometime during the week of the, uh, eleventh. Uh, that they plan to complete their review with a revised SNP by the end of the month. So, again, that's what they said. But, uh, I, I, and all that, it's, it's been a little arduous.
And we ended up having to do more testing in the last six years too, we had a whole different.
Yeah, um, I think back in twenty nineteen. Uh, the, the DEC gave us the opportunity to additional testing for something that was not even an issue, which, uh. We, you know, cost us six months' time.
Okay, we, we, we have to adjourn and we're going to reopen the regular meeting at eight o'clock. Make a motion to adjourn.
I'll, I'll object to that motion as we had, at least, I had an item. Uh, that I wanted to talk about and I thought I would have to be the, have the courtesy to do it. Uh, but, no, i- i- it's, it's over, I'll, I'll just object or raise it at the next meeting. And I'll, and I'll do my objection at the time.
I'm asking you which item, I'm, I'm, you know.
You, you know exactly what it is.
There's no backup on that item.
What item?
Do whatever you.
No, Victor.
Close the meeting if you want, that's it.
I'm, I'm asking questions about your.
I'll, I'll say, I'll say it at the next meeting.
I imagine it's F.
Six years of pending priorities, no backup. All right, I made a motion, close the meeting. Second, we'll be called. Trustees Young?
Yes.
Trustee Natchez? Trustee Lucas?
Yes.
Trustee to four?
No.
Mayor Murphy?
Hi.
And folks, we'll be back at eight o'clock.
I'll do something different, I'll do something different, I, I have my idea, I'll do something different, thank you.
Thank you.
Can we get rid of the Yankee Stadium reverb? Okay, thank you. So, so you're asking to change?
I mean, and, and historically, at the end of the meetings, every trustee, if they had anything to say like announcements or whatever, could do so. It's not under a rule, we can't have it, and yes, there is something there. Uh, and I have something that I'd like to do there. So I'd like to make that.
Okay, but you're asking to change board procedures without having ever been a work session? Or, you know, I, you know, if you wanted to say a goodbye message, I told you you could do that, you know, at the, the end of the meeting.
It's not, it's not your decision.
I know, but Dan, we have work sessions to discuss stuff like this. You know, and you couldn't stop on, okay, Dan made that motion.
I will second the motion because I think both Dan and Victor should be able to say something.
And they would be allowed to say something. He's talking about changing our work.
I'm saying for tonight, you can do whatever you want for whatever else you want, but that's the agenda we do.
Yeah, okay. This board has been very strict about having things on work sessions and things then on a regular meeting. And we had a whole discussion tonight about Santa Claus and not being enough information uh, to put it on the regular meeting. Now, this has never been introduced or asked before. And there's a motion in a second, I just want to point that out. Give this a vote, Ogie.
Trustee is young?
Can I wait a second? I, I just need to locate the agenda.
I, I, I'm, I'm.
One sec, just to see what the changes. What, what is the change that you're proposing?
Your agenda?
Whatever.
On your phone?
Hang up, it's not on the, I don't have a paper. It's on the phone, like many people do this thing. I had it a minute ago, just give me a break.
It doesn't, they can, they can say what they want.
Give me a break.
What you do about it? Okay, okay, alright.
What's the proposal to change what? I'm sorry. I hear it. I have it. What's the proposal to change ten to nine? Was it?
Nine.
Change item. Add an item to the procedures. That we worked so hard to vote on.
He's, he's asking to add an item to the agenda. And the agenda, he's not asked.
Agenda?
No, he's not. Said there should be a place for all the trustees. He didn't talk about tonight.
That's why I want clarification.
That's exactly what he said, or I'm, I'm, I'm sorry, but I'm quoting him.
Procedures, he asked if tonight there could be remarks. That's what I heard.
But, okay. It's just been different words, but uh, that's not what I heard.
That's why I'm asking, to clarify the motion is to add a session ten that says what?
Ten, existing number nine for tonight would become number ten and number nine would be common from trustees.
That's not changing the procedures. I support that motion.
Full roll.
Trustee is young?
Yeah. Yes.
Trustee Natchez?
Yes.
Trustee to four?
Yes.
Mayor Murphy?
No, because it does change the procedures. But I'm, I'm fine with you saying whatever you want to say at the end. Okay. Presentations, presentations on a stretch code.
I think that was postponed.
Postponed?
We got an email today that it was postponed.
Okay, uh, next item of my agenda is communication to the board. I'm sure there are folks here who want to speak about a particular topic. Uh, and, and I'm betting it's continental view, a lot of you want to speak about. And that's fine. Uh, I just want to go over the ground rules. The ground rules is you get, you get up to the mic. Please, uh, if, if you can introduce yourself and, you know, then you have a five-minute time limit. Uh, we'd be happy to hear what your concerns are. And uh, on any subject, but I know that there's a lot of people here from the development of continental view. So please, the mic is open.
Good evening, Mr. Maron, members of trustees. The board has asked me to come. I'm an attorney, Peter Bivrid, which is county member of the firm of Bivrid and Bendish. And I thought it would, uh, I don't know what the board has been told about the history of this property. We met back with a representative of the village attorney's office and with the building department, Jerry, back on October nineteenth, to discuss the, uh, the history of that property, how it came to be, who owned it, why they owned it. I don't know if that was explained to the board, but in nutshell, back in the nineties, Wichita County established a housing inflammation fund, inflammation fund to, to create affordable housing. Uh, it was tied into a, a salary proposition where you had to have a certain lower level salary to buy anything in that, in that kind of meeting unit. That was, uh, that was then. Uh, there was a resolution by the village board trustees to apply for that, or apply for that grant. I guess it was granted because they got it. Uh, one of the conditions was that the sponsor would deed to the village two parcels of land, one to be used as a park, one to be used as a parking lot. two parcels of land, one to be used as a park, one to be used as a parking lot. And the was, there was a $250,000, I guess, came down to a fee, $250,000 paid for the infrastructure to build the park, I guess, the park and the parking lot. As a condition to the, there was also a resolution that was supposed to be adopted, an agreement that would allow the owners of the units in the building to have a preference for parking. And as a consequence of that, they would be required to be responsible for certain things, one, maintenance, insurance. And it was also a penalty put in there that you couldn't sell your property for more than a certain amount of profit. And that was to expire in 20 years from the date of this. The village attorney, or the young man that came there, that I don't know his name, I don't remember it. He assured us that he would research the resolutions that were passed by the board and let us know what was actually included, was put in those resolutions. It now appears, and let me just say at the point of record, for the last 25 years, the condominium has paid the insurance, the maintenance, the landscaping, the electric, all of the electric, the repair of lights. They have repaired all the potholes in there, then they have repaired and removed dead trees. So they have incurred a massive amount of expense over the 25 years. I know that, in addition to which, I believe that most of the residents, I don't know how many are residents, so many are not, and I don't know whether we're too late with regards to this, because it looks like it's odd to be voted for tonight. But they, there's a petition here signed by 52 people who either live there or are adjacent to the property who oppose using this as a dog park. I don't know if anybody's passed it by the environmental people. I don't know if anybody has considered the expense that are going to be incurred as a result of this. And whether or not you think that that continental view is going to be responsible to continue to pay these expenses when you change the nature of the actual use of the park from different than what was originally resolved, just the park and the parking space. I understand also, and we spoke, we spoke to the village attorney and the building department. We discussed the fact that there is a distinction between maintenance and capital improvements. That there, that is ripe for a capital improvement because it has deteriorated to the point now where the the pavement has to be replaced or repaid. I think that the, the way I read it is that most of the residents do not want the dog park there. They are concerned with the environmental impact of it, the odor that it'll create. And also that there's been no mention anywhere along the way, along the way of what, who's going to incur these expenses. We were under the impression that we were going to have a meeting before any of this to discuss who's paying this. They've been paying this 25 years, massive amount of money. The electric bill alone, the, there is a lawsuit pending right now, a slip and fall in that parking lot that the Continental View's insurance has to cover, and they have to pay for these insurance, whether they're going to be raised or not. I don't know. The property definitely belongs to the Village of America. There's a deed dated. I guess it was, it's not dated on the tab, but it's taken back to the North Island on January 14th, 1997.
Mr. Goodrich, I'm sorry. I understand what you're saying, and your time has expired, but I can tell you this, and I can tell your neighbors this, and your clients. I have no, you know, the dog park there to me is a nonstarter. That doesn't seem like a viable alternative for dog park. What happened is we have an ad hoc dog park committee that was looking at all alternatives, and that was one of the alternatives that they looked at. But that that decision will ultimately be made by people sitting up here.
I understand that. But I wanted them to be aware.
No, I understand. I understand. But I'm just, I'm telling you from my own personal perspective, I think that's not a smart idea.
I would agree with you. But the, what, these people are going to incur the extra cost.
I understand.
You're going to have a sanitary problem. You're going to have more people coming and going in there. You're going to have traffic problems. You're going to have all kinds of additional problems. I went there, looked at the property. There's already tremendous, tremendous defects on a city street. Which could be, which could be a potential hazard if somebody sent a notice letter to the village and said there's a huge crack in that concrete there.
I understand you, Mr. Goodrich, but I gotta, I gotta leave room for other people, and your five minutes is up. I'm sorry. It's just the way I.
One of the board members said they would defer their time.
No, no, I can't do that. There's a reason for it. It's not arbitrary.
I understand.
I'm sorry. I really am.
No problem.
Thank you.
I just wanted, I just wanted to let you know the history.
No, you did.
And the impact it would be to these people who are sitting.
Thank you.
And I would like to pass up this.
Please.
And file, let this be filed with the board.
Thank you, Mr. Goodrich.
Thank you for your time.
Anybody else from this?
Thank you.
Hi, my name is Patty Henry from Benchmark Management. I manage content for the condominium for years. Marbiest thing is we started with Jerry and village manager before the whole dog park was. We wanted the village to step in a little bit to do the capital improvement, would pave the parking lot. You know, we pay for the snowplow, we pay for the landscaping, this lights, the like, we found out we paying for the electricity on the lakes and your parking lot. So 25 years has gone by, and we need capital improvement with the parking lot itself. And we wanted the board to go in front of the board to who's going to do this. We can't afford to pay the parking lot. We've been paying all of this. You're getting the money. And, you know, they don't have a problem doing the landscaping or the snowplow, because if we do it, it will be done. Not at the end of the day, or maybe it wouldn't get done till tomorrow. We would have our license and insured landscapers do it. We just would want you guys to take a look at the agreement and see if you can pave the parking lot. Because that's, if I rent your house, I have to shovel the snow, cut the grass, but I'm not going to fix the roof if I'm renting your house. And to us, the parking lot to get repaved and the lights to get fixed, it seems like a capital improvement and not just ongoing maintenance, like landscaping and snowplow, as it has in our offering plan and in everything that we rent. But in the meantime, this dog park thing came up. So it's kind of a two-part thing. That if you're going to turn in for a dog park, all bets are off. Right? Because you're bringing people in there, and what if they slip and fall? We already have a lawsuit. They're suing you, they're suing us, they're suing Benchmark, they're suing everybody. So that's how it started, that we wanted the maintenance to be, for you guys, to see if you can get that parking lot.
So you're not talking about maintenance, you're talking about capital?
Capital improvement, right. We're not talking about cutting the grass or the snow, as long as it stays the way it is, but we're down to a capital improvement of the parking lot has come to the end of its life. And the lights have come to the end of life. We keep band-aiding them, having lands electrical, go fix it. But also, we're paying, we didn't realize, we're paying for the electricity also on these lights on your parking lot.
Spot's posing the village attorney.
So Mayor, I know Mr. Goodrich and that. Mark.
Mark.
Mark Corres, deputy village attorney, Mark Corres. I know there was a discussion about modifying the agreement, but the agreement really provides for maintenance and the other expenses. They've been talking about repaving my property with you. I'm not familiar with it enough to be able to opine on this capital improvement issue, whether that's covered or not. But I can certainly get back to the board and discuss.
Okay, can we put it on the work session for January?
For January?
Yeah, this gives you time to do all the research. We'll discuss it as a board. Sure you don't want dog park? Not there. Anybody else like to address the board tonight? Okay, thank you very much. Next item on the agenda. Is.
Do you plan on voting on this tonight?
No, sir.
You know, I think, I think what he's talking about is there, the dog park is on. It was for a different location and it's being held. And I think that there was a discussion of having it in a different location. And that is that, but the dog park, the ad hoc dog park subcommittee is reconvening and looking at other locations. So I think it's 3A, and it says to be held, so it's not being.
It'll probably be decided sometime in January, but rest easy. Yeah, but that was, that was an original dog park down in Harrow Road Park, which is where it might end up anyway.
And just to be clear, there's, to my knowledge, there's nobody on this board who has even suggested tangentially that, that that would be a good spot for the dog park. This is entirely an ad hoc subcommittee.
Because the thing that got us a little bit, and you guys.
Can you speak at the mic? The people.
I got an email from Sherry, and you guys were all on it. And it made us that if it is determined that we have that responsibility, it will make all the difference regarding the future use of that lot. So that was, came to me as saying, like, wait a minute, if we have to take responsibility, it will make all the difference regarding the future use. So what is that saying? If, so if we have you pay this, then you're going to do something different to it? I mean, that's what the emails.
I would rest easy on that one, as I said. Thank you. Public hearings, adoption of PLI. Lowering village-wide speed limits to 25 miles per hour. That's going to be held. Are you getting more information on it? Thank you.
Yeah. Have some initial conversation.
Have a good night. You sure you don't want to stay? There's a lot of fun things on the agenda. Have a good evening. Public hearing on PLLD, tree law revisions. I need a motion to open this hearing.
Second.
Orgy, please.
Trustee is young?
Yes.
Natchez? Lucas?
Yes.
Before?
Yes.
Mayor Murphy?
Hi. Order the bills. Oh, Jesus, I'm sorry. I'm in a bit of a hurry. So what happened is we passed the tree law. And I think it's been effective. The object of the tree law, obviously, is to preserve, protect, and promote the reforestation, or the canopy, as they call it, of the Village of America. I think, you know, when you, when you want to remove a tree on your property, you apply and you get a permit if it is a sick tree, needs to come down, or if it's in some ways a danger to the community. And if it's not, we ask you to keep it, and you have to keep it. Jerry, is that in some substance what happens? So, but in the, in the mechanics of the law, there were deemed to be certain issues that needed to be addressed. And we have revised the law to address those issues. The tree committee worked very, very hard on the revisions. It was given to the land use boards. The planning board made some good suggestions. And we took that all into account, and here's what we have in front of us, proposed local law D 2022. So if anybody in the audience has any questions or concerns about this law? Anybody on the board?
Still very concerned that we do not have a requirement to issue the permit. We have required them to apply for permits. But there's nothing that requires the village to process it originally. In, in having filed and waiting seven months for it to be processed.
Anybody else? Okay, I'd like to thank the tree committee for their hard work, not only on this law, but every day planting trees, pruning trees, teaching other folks how to prune trees, and generally patrolling the community to ensure the health of our trees. They are. What was that, the once, remember from Dr. Zeus?
I'm not that old.
I'm the once.
I don't know.
Certainly speak for the trees.
A new term is soft instruction.
Okay. Any other comments on the board? I'm like a motion to close.
Do you want to say something?
No, I'm just, I'm just anxious that you get this done.
Yeah. It wasn't just the tree committee that worked hard. It was the village attorney as well.
I think the original law, 21 revision.
21. Versions.
Versions. And this law has five versions.
Yeah, five. Yeah, so.
Okay. I'm making a motion to close the public hearing.
Second.
Hold on.
Trustee is young?
Yes.
Natchez? Lucas?
Yes.
Before?
Yes.
Mayor Murphy?
Hi. I need a motion to adopt local law D.
I'm moving what we adopt. Local law D.
You have a second. Hold on.
Trustee is young?
Yes.
Natchez? Lucas?
Yes.
Before?
Yes.
Mayor Murphy?
Hi. Great, thank you. Now we go to order of those. Way, budget transfers for parks OT. Jerry, do you want to talk with us?
Yeah. So Parks OT included in your packet is all of the items that the parks have been involved in that have incurred overtime this year, because we do a lot of things in-house. And we're talking about the 19750, right?
Yes.
So this is a transfer from account service, contract services and building improvements to overtime. And on the back of my agenda have all of these overtime items that were unanticipated.
Yes, and it's on our agenda too.
I mean, I think this will inform the way we do the budget this year, do you? Because there's, there's more events that have happened, and it's kind of programming that, like, Community for the Environment has done and other groups have done. But it still involves overtime for parks and for recreation. You know, so, and then some of the items, like, I think when, when a job has been brought in-house, there's probably another offset so that it may cost more in staff time or overtime, but there's a reduction in outgoing money. And I think if that gets explained.
It's in the resolution.
Well, it's in the resolution, but it's not so specific.
Well, that's why, that's why Nora, we're taking, we're taking ten out of the contract services. Normally, we would hire contractors.
And you want, but the anticipation isn't that we're going to have to add more to contract services later in the year, that this is really.
It just shows you how we're using it.
Yeah, and it can be, it's not going to ultimately affect the budget. It's, it's a budget transfer, and we aren't going to anticipate having to take money out of the reserve fund to put back in the contract services because we've done this.
The other thing is due to the nature of this talents and experience, our Parks General Foreman goes out and does a lot of maintenance calls and does a lot of specity things, kind of like a a jack of all trades, which he's very good at, but then at times has to bring in his staff in order to deal with those kinds of things. So that's what happens there.
Just to address Nora's point, it says in the resolution, whereas the Parks Department staff continually performs tasks in-house that were in the past done by an outside vendor, and therefore has surplus funds and other parks department budget lines, the contract service lines and the buildings and parks improvement. So we're, we're taking money from one part of their budget and just moving it into the other part of the budget, because they're not using outside contractors in some substance. Okay.
Well, the question, the 19750, is that a straight time, or does that include all the fringe benefits?
No, the fringe benefits are already paid. You pay the fringe benefits because these are employees of the village, that you would pay fringe benefits whether they worked or didn't work.
Fringe benefits come out of the package.
You're paying health.
Employee, not every per hour.
You're paying health insurance for an employee who, who doesn't necessarily, you're paying all of those things.
We've had previous transfers for overtime to the Parks Department.
I don't recall any, but maybe. I don't have that good of a brain.
Some of these things that are in your list were referred to in the discussions when we had the previous transfers. Well, some of these things that are in your list were referred to in the discussions when we had the previous transfers. I know, but they're complicated, although there were some transfers for beach salaries or day camp salaries.
Yeah.
So that's a separate bunch of line. So I think we, there are multiple cost centers that are administered by the recreation department, so.
I don't remember that.
This is a specific one.
And some for recreation is different than parks.
Yeah, recreation is different than park, yeah.
Okay, I need a motion.
I'll finish.
I just want, one of the items is um the maintenance calls for two thirty four Stanley leaking windows. And um we spent a lot of money to repair that building and last spring we were on track to replace the windows and that fell by the wayside and. A, I think, you know, we would have could have avoided the maintenance calls if we replaced the windows and B. You know, I don't wanna be in a situation where we have leaks and we're going to have to redo that plaster for for a point again. So I think that. I know, I know that you had, I, we talked about that and you're looking.
When to update the estimates, but. Yeah, and that's it. So and it's a directed staff that we have to have those updated estimates. For the December twelfth meeting, so it'll be an item on the agenda for December twelve.
Because we just, we, I don't wanna, I, we, we can't solve this problem by plastic.
I agree.
We spent a lot of money to fix this, so.
We're talking about big money for those windows too, but you guys are aware of that already.
Well, probably bigger now than it would have been in the spring, but.
My comment is, my great wrecking park is a great department. They're actually very proactive, so so I. Can't say, you know, any, any. Anything that goes against them, you know, keep doing it, but I, my concern is that this kind of. Transfers just uh before the abstract in 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 the end really amount to budget reviews. So when it's smaller or when it it kind of catches, but this coupled with what we had before. Really calls for, those are kind of the alerts that the board has to hear and say, let's sit down and review this department. Maybe they're doing excellent. But maybe they need to be reviewed so their performance, uh, you know, can continue and then maybe do a review mid-year. But not a deal of 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 a decision, uh, because then then that that can help. Not just inform the next year, but how how the lines are going. If you go, I went to it, you know, the various lines that we've been expanding it. It 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 then invites other questions and it just can't be discussed, um, you know. On, as I said, just just like this on the day as when you're approving or not bill. So so that's my concern. I I invite you really to review that department. And maybe others, as as you do, uh, mid check because we've been. I think we've been doing a lot of work, uh, spending a lot of capital, but also uh you you need to fine tune every department, so I invite you to do that. So that's my my concern about this one because I can't really measure.
Okay, my mid-year reviews are scheduled for this week, Thursday and Friday, with every department and every department.
And their budget reviews.
And their review as well.
Good.
To make sure that they're following things up and doing things the way they need to. Everyone except Augie is nervous.
Uh, I'd like a motion, please. So, I'll second, I'll Nora's second call roll.
Trustee is young.
Yes.
Not just. Lucas.
Yes.
Before.
Nope.
Mayor Murphy.
Hi. Whereas the marine education center, this is a authorizing to executive budget transfer to fund marine educational center supplies. So. One of the things that has gone on these two resolutions is something usually what would have happened years ago. Is that those transfers would have been made at the end of the year. We instructed staff to then do them in a more timely fashion so that we know. You know, where where we are and where, and and this is for in department transfers. So that was just an in department transfer of funds uh from the parks department. This is an in department transfer of funds uh from the marine education center. And it doesn't mean they're going over their budget. It means that they're not spending in one area. And we're transferring what they're not spending in one area to another area that they they've been more active in. Uh, and in this supply, in this, it goes from marine education center office equipment, a thousand dollars. To marine education center supplies, uh, which I think has a lot to do with uh feeding the fish. And the various crustaceans that she has down there. And the costs have gone up, uh, because of course everything is going up. So any questions about the fish food resolution here? Okay. Uh, I'll make the motion. Call.
Trustee is young.
Yes.
That just.
Yeah.
Lucas.
Yes.
Before.
Yes.
Mayor Murphy.
Hi. Uh, resolution authorizing budget transfers to fund marine educate, I'm sorry, and flooring, the next is flooring. Uh, the marine education center flooring. Uh, Jerry, you want to talk with us a minute?
Uh, Mayor, um, through Kyle, our naturalist, he has asked for the repair and upgrading. Of the flooring in the marine education center to be more mold and mildew resistant. Um, the costs of the supplies and the materials are thirty two hundred dollars, approximately thirty two hundred dollars. This is a, this is an ask of the board um to get this thirty one or thirty two hundred dollars. Out of the um marine education trust fund, which has twenty seven thousand, six, twenty four and seven cents.
Then what's, who, who's gonna do the work? Will that be parks? So that there, the, ultimately, this could be another overtime cost. Which I think when when we're being asked to fund the overtime cost for this. We should also know how much it would have cost to be is an outside vendor. Like, that might be. This is just supplies and materials. This doesn't, this isn't the, this isn't the work to implement it. Thank you.
I need a motion.
Before we do a motion, we only concern that I I happen to think it's a great idea, but the only concern I have is in a FEMA zone. And you know, when you add the cost of labor to that, are we approaching the fifty percent? With the uh market value of of the building. Because that would. Raise the building.
What what's the market value of the building? It's a public property. It's it's not.
FEMA debt makes no distinction distinction between who owns.
And how do you figure out the market value?
There are ways of doing it. There are formulas and there are approaches.
We're putting in thirty two hundred dollars worth of flooring, plus staff will be probably working there for a day to do it.
No, I'm good. I'm just simply saying, these are things that need to be checked to make sure that we don't get in trouble for doing something against what the. Regulations are that we have to follow, that's all.
Are you asking, is the board asking me to check it or not? Because if not, I'm not doing it. I wouldn't be doing that. That seems like a or a calculation that doesn't seem, this is such a low amount of money. If it was thirty thousand or more, I could understand that concern.
It is a huge. That's part, that's part of the problem, Jerry.
Part of the problem, what's what's what? What's the problem?
You're saying if it's a large building, then we would, you know, spend a lot of money, then we would, you know, go through the calculation. It's some. You're in a FEMA zone. The the cost of that building, the market value of that building can't be very great.
What do you think it is?
I don't know. I I would, I would, you know, I can get it.
To see what the value of the building is. But if there's a formula, we have to go through the whole process and you get this floor upgraded to thirty two hundred dollars, so.
It's not the thirty two, it's more than the thirty two, whatever labor, whatever expenses are incurred in undertaking the expense. Gets added to the total. So the thirty two hundred dollars in and of itself doesn't bother me, but by the time, you know, I don't know what else is involved and what other costs would be applied. Even though they're coming out of labor that you already have. The it, the issue is, uh, and we have to be wary of this, not only for this, but everything else we do. Okay, we require, we require this for other, everybody else in the village also is required to do that, that's all.
I need a coastal resource consultant in the future.
I, you know, I think it's just like whether the lines cross and like whatever the insurance value of this building is, if you're spending more than fifty percent of the value. It's also, it's also, I understand the, I I understand that, but I think to Dan's point. It's like ADA compliance. It's the lines cross and you're spending enough money to rehab a building. That gets to the fifty percent category, then if it's in a flood zone, it's supposed to be elevated and if it's. Um, it should be ADA compliant, and so those are just at this. I I don't imagine that this building is. It's not, you know what? It it's not absurd to bring it up and it's and and. Because if the lines cross and we're spending more than fifty percent. Um, either a building that um should be made ADA compliant, we will have a situation right now. Or have to elevate it, we should know those numbers. That should just be part of our calculation. I don't think you have to fill out an application. I don't think you need a consultant. It's just. How much is the, is the building worth and are you putting like more than fifty percent into it? I think that's the basic rule of thumb, and if you are, then you have to explore it. It's like if you're dealing with seeker, if it's a type two action, you're done, but.
I may not have the staff to be able to calculate all these things that we need to do. We may have to bring on a coastal resource specialist in order to figure that out. How would we know? We're just managers of public entities.
Uh, I mean, I'm gonna make a stab that we have an insurance value for the building because we have to insure it. If we're spending more than fifty percent on the insurance value, then maybe we, then maybe that triggers something. I'm just like, like. It's just commonsensical.
We had thirty two hundred dollar expense in front of us, which obviously are going to be reaching a special and. I'll make a motion. Call roll, please.
Trustee is young.
Yes.
Trustee Natchez.
The stipulation that uh that I've stated.
Trustee Lucas.
Yes.
Trustee to four.
Yes.
Mayor Murphy.
Hi. Uh, abstract of order to vouchers, uh, tonight's. Is one million seventy one thousand three hundred and seventy dollars and ninety one cents. Questions or concerns?
Page six. The uh, um, uh, the bill from uh April. Uh, what is the, what was incurred in terms of joint waterworks?
I'm sorry?
What was incurred in terms of the dear uh for. Of the joint waterwork? What's it to joint waterworks?
It it has to do with representing the village in connection with the law. Important proceeding.
I'm sorry?
This was the EPA.
Yes.
Thank you, that's, um, and I also have question that I raised earlier today. On page twenty two. Looking for. Uh, what I understand is for ornaments for the um harbor island Santa experience. Of fifteen thousand eight hundred and fifty dollars. And if I'm correct, what I understand is sixty five hundred. All over sixty five hundred dollars were done at the end of the year, the fiscal year was encumbered by a. By a work, I um. Not a worker, um, whatever purchase order, purchase order. From li- from last year's budget in the balance in the line was thirty five hundred dollars in the budget for this year. And the difference of um an additional six thousand dollars was from re redoing from other areas uh within the budget. I I I'm just, I I guess if we had a budget for thirty five hundred dollars. And we're gonna do some significant change. It seems to me that we should be worrying about that long before it's done. These are expenses that have been incurred, am I correct?
Did you ask me this question? Because I didn't get it from you. I don't know if you asked me this question. I I didn't.
Asking for whoever would know, but I.
You talked to.
It comes from the, so I understand it for the audit of the bills, Jerry, it goes, everything gets approved through your office and then goes to clerk treasurer. Is that correct?
Okay, so hang on a second. You didn't ask me this question, but I don't have an answer for you. Did one of you guys get this question?
I asked only today.
Okay. You spoke to Augie today? I'm sorry, I was not aware of that. I apologize.
No, but my.
I apologize for that. So Augie, do you have a?
I didn't brief you, I'm sorry, Jerry.
Okay. So I don't understand what you're asking. Because we spent more, you need to know about it?
We spent, we had, when the budget was created, it was for thirty five hundred dollars.
For holiday decorations?
That's correct.
Okay.
Okay, we're spending fifteen thousand eight hundred and fifty dollars for holiday.
Do you think we're spending money that the board didn't approve?
It did, we didn't approve it for holiday, for for uh a Santa experience, that's correct.
So how does our line get funded if you didn't approve the money?
Because there were, there are, from what I understand, uh, and Augie can maybe explain it better. Was changes from other areas that uh were.
Areas that we didn't spend holiday decorations on, so we're spending more on Christmas? Is that the, is that the answer?
Yes.
Oh.
The purchase of from the previous year, six thousand dollars and transfers of nine thousand to that line.
Transfers of nine thousand.
Yeah.
Approved by the board.
Yeah. So it's fifteen.
I'm not sure what the, what the issue is. Because we didn't spend thirty five hundred, we spent more than thirty five hundred, but we wouldn't have been able to spend. This amount if we didn't have extra money from other events.
I understand that, I guess the court, the issue that I'm seeing is. It appears that what we were, what did the budget, we had an idea of what we were spending on. The budget transfers didn't specify where we're going to one, one specific event.
Specify holiday decorations, though.
You know, this is, this is the. Well, this is a certain kind of holiday decorations, which is part of celebrations.
Holidays, decorations.
But we transferred the money. Not, it wasn't today, it was a transfer.
In the past.
In the past.
I just, I didn't, I didn't know, because he didn't, because.
I mean, I'm.
Not just didn't ask me the question.
It was a transfer in the past, is that correct? I think it was. We'd had a lot of transfers.
So if it was, is there a problem that the line wasn't funded by the board of trustees or it was funded by the board of trustees? Was it funded by the board of trustees?
The original line of thirty five hundred is part of the original budget. The P L, which was put into the system, was authorized.
Okay.
And the transfers were authorized.
The transfers.
Of some of nine thousand dollars.
They were authorized. So what's the question?
So.
Because we didn't spend thirty five hundred, we spent more.
We already approved it.
Approved what's money into without knowing, there was, there were multiple transfers done at different times from what I understand. Okay, to the, to uh that it's now being used for the Christmas decoration. The fact that we've transferred a lot of money, well and above what we were anticipating for a specific event. Would be something that I would normally think, you know, people should be appraised of it, so we understand that. When we get the budget transfers, you know, we don't get the uh, we get them in generality. And that's what I'm saying. I think what I was saying is that this was, we, we came to the board before tonight.
Yes.
Requesting a transfer. To this first line, which is approved by the board of trustees. Question, it was several transfers, that's the issue. It wasn't one transfer, which would have, which would have let us know. That's what I'm saying.
So there there was the various action, there was no. This was all uh brought to the board's attention before.
But.
And and now.
I was getting concerned that it wasn't.
And uh, now, 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 now the bill has come to be paid.
Is it okay to pay the bill for money that was transferred by the board? I would suspect so, but I don't know.
Was, so this, this has been purchased already?
Purchased because. The items were approved, it's on the bill. From an item that, from a line that was funded by the board of trustees.
I see it on the bill here.
Yes.
I think I'm trying to understand this, is actually in the expense report, but I'm I'm tracking it differently, and this is why it's very good. Work to have the expense report. On the expense report. It's, 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 uh, it's available for anybody. If you go to the auto bills, you have there are four items, the abstract that you're paying. The revenues, the expenses to date, and then you have uh results of operations. If you go to the expense report, that's how I can track it, page thirty, twenty three of twenty nine. You go to this line, which is seventy five fifty, and you see celebrations, so I come down and look at the decorations. That's where you can confirm the original budget. We approve us thirty five hundred. And now with this adjustment, it will go up to twenty nine, nineteen, almost twenty. So that's because of prior encumbrances, but they were probably for. So that's because of prior encumbrances, but they were probably for something different or.
No, they would want to been the. Order from last year would have only been out of this line in previous years. And then the transfers. Which would have been.
For holiday decorations, I don't, I don't recall, recall that.
So celebration, Victor, celebration contract expenses, what the account is listed as.
So the, Gary, if you want, I could shed some light on this?
Yeah.
So the transfers that were made into a scout are from like accounts. Which under our procedures, the manager can't make transfers under like accounts. Like a list out the like accounts for you. Veterans Day was nine hundred fifty dollars. Uh parade for twenty-five was fifteen hundred. The Fourth of July fireworks was five thousand seven fifty, Memorial Day was fifteen hundred. Columbus was two hundred for a total of nine thousand nine hundred. All of these amounts are put into seventy-five fifty for twenty-seven. They're all like accounts.
Okay.
They're all point four.
Those are all items that were approved by the Board of Trustees in the past.
Yeah, they aren't, they don't need to be.
They were originally.
The original budgets were approved by the board.
And for one year, we, the original budgets were approved by the board. And the beginning, originally, but then we also, four years ago. We had a much more granular breakdown so that there was more specifics and we. The staff requested that it be changed, so it was easier to do these kinds of transfers.
And we provide those, that's what Victor's referring to as the reports, yeah, that we provide them every meeting.
Okay.
May I please have a motion to approve the abstract?
I'll move. Second.
Trustee. I have one thing, save the sound also shows up, it doesn't have a figure, but save the sound.
Trustees, young?
Yes.
Natchez?
Yeah.
Yes.
The four?
No.
Mayor Murphy?
Yes, give this to, this to trust, please.
Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, Ogie.
Old business, uh we're, we're holding the dog park. Uh resolution scheduling public hearing on P L J twenty-twenty-two. Uh for S C R I E and D R I E programs. That is under three. The, uh the last time we did this, there was a, an error in the amount, it should have said uh. Should have said fifty thousand instead of thirty-five thousand. Uh and that was related to the change. So this would be scheduling the, pardon me, scheduling the public hearing for December twelfth on this matter. And this is to give a little bit of a break to folks who are struggling to uh pay uh the living expenses.
Okay.
I need a motion to schedule this public hearing for December twelfth.
Some of.
Second.
Augustino. Trustees, young?
Yes.
Natchez?
Yeah.
Yes.
Sephora?
Yes.
Mayor Murphy?
Hi, wireless cell communication to be held, new business. Resolution establishing official vehicle parking at Columbia Firehouse uh. This is for the fire chiefs, Chuck? For?
Yeah. For individuals responding to calls, Mayor.
Okay. And this is uh on Jefferson Avenue on the west side. Uh from the intersection of North Berry to a point one hundred twenty-five feet north thereof. Firefighter parking only is what it will be reserved for. We have any questions or concerns?
Yeah.
Your motion?
Some of.
Second. Ogie, please put a word.
Trustees, young?
Yes.
Natchez? Lucas?
Yes.
Sephora?
Yes.
Mayor Murphy?
Hi, I'm I'm shocked that it took this long to get the, 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 without parking.
It's tied over there.
I think the word official is very um.
Okay.
Influential in this resolution.
Uh parking license agreement with Life Church uh that we had talked about. We talked about modifying this uh to fifteen permits, no, from fifteen to ten. And to make it a one-year uh trial period.
What was I, what I suggested, some of the other folks had suggested, are you assured?
I think, I think you have to lose it.
I think a year is fine, I think we, I don't know how, how are we gonna evaluate whether it's beneficial or not, we're not gonna know. Are we gonna know the revenue from those specific spaces?
Yes.
Right. And then, and I guess the other question is, you know, are we gonna find there's more of a problem with the ability to park on Saturdays? And I always just walk, so it won't be, I won't be able to test that.
The complaints come from Marana Avenue, they don't come from Phyllis Park. People don't wanna park.
So can we change, uh change the fifteen to ten, and now therefore be resolved that the village managers is authorized to execute a license agreement. Uh for one year. With the Life Church of Memphis.
One, one question, very, could be very simple, but it's a legal matter, so has the attorney looked at this or?
We've looked at the agreement, we drafted the agreements.
Okay. So with those changes, I will make the motion.
I mean, we can give these because we're getting some sort of a benefit, and the benefit is the ability to use those spaces.
The bargain for exchange, so I give.
I'll make the motion.
Second.
Ogie.
Trustees, young?
Yes.
Natchez? Trustee Lucas?
Yeah.
Trustee to four?
Yes.
Mayor Murphy?
Hi, uh resolution accepting speech, uh bench, a bench donation at Harbor Island Park. Uh this is a donation from Mr. and Mrs. William Farrell and Miss Susan Merson. And their desires of donating a bench to Village of America to replace the Harbor Island Park loving memory. Florence and Milton Gold Clem. And this is a donation of two thousand two hundred and forty-one dollars. And I'd like to thank the Farrell's and Miss Merson. Uh and I will make the motion.
Second.
Just a question, uh is there a lot more space for benches anymore, or are we gonna?
We're gonna have to move to other apartments.
Yes, as I, I was down there the other day, and it looked like this ample, ample seating.
Oh, Phyllis Park Road needs um new benches, um there's uh spots within Florence that could be benches.
One more in Columbus. The, the problem is that people are, you know, emotionally attached to Hobbs Brown, and I get it too. Right, it's a summon, it could have spread somewhere. Oh, my kids holding the ashes.
You have to, you have to, you have to go to the H C M C.
Alright, I I made the motion.
We have a vote?
Uh you have to call for a vote.
Please have a vote.
Trustees, young?
Yes.
Trustee Natchez?
Bench, bench.
Yes.
Trustee Lucas?
Yes.
Trustee to four, yes, Mayor Murphy?
Hi, uh the next is another donation, this is donation to the Marine Education Center. Uh by Doctor and Mrs. Frederick Caskill, it's a very generous donation of twelve hundred dollars to Marine Education Center. For their uh touch tanks.
For shark.
Shark.
I know, is that correct?
It won't let me know.
I love that show.
Uh I need a motion.
Some of.
Second. Yes.
Yes. Trustee Lucas?
Yes.
Trustee to four?
Yes.
Mayor Murphy?
Hi. Uh the next up is Special Events Resolution authorizing supplemental appropriation to fund the Santa Experience. Uh this is moving thirty-five thousand dollars at an appropriate fund balance. Uh to celebration overtime's thirty-five thousand dollars. Uh the Santa Experience is a two-day event in the Village of America. Where uh. Parents uh can register their child to meet Santa Claus. And uh Santa Claus uh, you know, as always, knows the children by their names. And uh their desires uh for their holiday gifts. And uh it it's been done a couple of years, and uh it really is a special event, but I know that some members of the board have uh. Reservations about the cost, so.
Mayor, if I could?
You can.
About forty-five minutes ago, I looked up what the camp profit was over the anticipated revenue, as well as the beach revenue, Harbor Island Park. Revenue and field maintenance revenue, all over anticipated revenue. In camp profits, we realized. A revenue increase. We made uh almost a hundred and eight thousand dollars this year in camp. Uh beach revenue is eight thousand dollars over the anticipated revenue. Our Browland Park parking, six thousand dollars over anticipated revenue, and field maintenance is thirty-one hundred dollars over anticipated revenue. In that email I sent you about forty-five minutes ago, we will make sure that next year the Santa Experience will have a full accounting at budget time. April, May.
Alright, thank you.
So that um we know, since this is an established event now, it'll be up to the board whether they wanna approve the full event or not. At the time that we even go with the budget, or I present the budget, you approve it.
Yeah, I mean, I asked Jerry if there was a way of finding funds for this, because I think that we are really, we, it's. And I said this in the work session, I'll say it again, it's a very un, it's very uncomfortable to be the branch. To say, no, you don't wanna spend thirty-five thousand dollars on overtime for an event. That was, you know, the overtime work started today and it's happening a week from Saturday and, and a week from Sunday. Um and this, you, this is, you know, when you think about places like historic Hudson Valley or, or. Who do the, the blaze or do these kinds of things, you know, they're selling tickets for six weeks, they're, they're spending money, but they're also making money. And we're not making very much money on this, and we don't make money in all of our rec programs, but if we make two thousand dollars on it with the car, charging for the cars, it will be. A lot, and um. I think if this had been presented in a way saying there is money in the budget that it can be transferred from. There, you know, we are gonna return some of the wreck and park money from the. The overage that we've made this summer to the general fund, so we'll be able to replenish it, it was, it's an entirely different argument, so.
It's my fault, Nora, uh so I provide these numbers to you over a period. August, September, October, when we get these numbers, I send out that email to the board and congratulate the park staff, but I never. I didn't even think to put it together um in this way, so that you could see that. Recreation staff does work hard to bring in as much money as possible.
I know, and I, and I mean, I've been the rec liaison for my entire tenure as. And, and I know that, you know, that, 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 that other communities who have. I don't, I don't wanna say more impressive recreation facilities, but I think that's what our staff would say, who have a pool or will have, you know. Things they can charge high-ticket items for, have heavier numbers, and they can fund their own apartment, and I know Jason's really trying to do that. And um I don't know if it's, you know, I don't know if it's a feasible thing to do, but it's a great thing to try, but um I I just think that. When you get to a point where you're doing a project and we're spending more on decorations than we planned, and it's thirty-five thousand dollars in overtime. You know, you have to ask, how did it, how did it, how did it balloon? It's like in a historic preservation project. And you, you know, all you're doing is painting a wall, and then you find out you have mold, all of a sudden, you know, it mushrooms, and so. I'm willing to ch, to change my mind because I, but, but, but you better.
I'm putting it, I'm putting it in the email that we'll make sure that we have a full accounting.
And I want.
To look back at the two events that we've already done, plus this event, to give you the actual.
Then, and I, I know that we got an award for it, and that's great, but is, you know, we are shortly gonna be asked to fund a dog park. And I know that a lot of residents are gonna be very unhappy if this thirty-five thousand dollars makes it. That much less that we have to spend in a dog park. So again, we haven't done our capital budget, we have to be. We, we, we keep exploding our day-to-day budget and it's not sustainable. We have two new trustees. And this is their first meeting, they haven't. They're, uh you know, this is a big, it's a big task, and we have to be fiscally. More responsible, and it's up to us to, I don't wanna be hard on you, but I'm, but I'm.
So, so, so I am getting the message, and as far as the capital budget, I've already tasked staff and directed them to start. Freshening up the three-year-old capital budget, so we will be ready, as soon as the board sets the meetings, we'll be ready to present, we won't have. I won't be asking for extra time, whenever you set the meeting, we'll be ready.
Thank you.
Jerry, to, to expand on, on your original. Uh sticker shock on, on the overtime, wha, what's the manpower like on this thing?
It's, it's, it goes on for a period of time, but there's, every staff member has to be involved in it, and it's a nighttime event, though it's not a, a daytime event. So it's not that they're working.
Every moment is overtime.
Yeah, cause it's holiday lights, it's holiday lights, and so on a weekend, yeah, so.
And it's also just the setup, I mean, the setup is tremendous, and so when they started to do this two years ago, it was a great, it wa, it was a great COVID activity. It was a way of doing something where people were in their own cars, so people were socially distanced, and it was a great idea, and it got bigger last year. But it may, you know, is it really, I mean, it's really fun, but is it really? The right allocation, application of our resources, is this how? You know, are we doing this instead of doing the, the, the two summer things on the Marana Avenue? Um is there a way of, you know, monetizing it a little bit better, so it offsets the costs? And I think those are the kinds of questions that really. Have to be asked and probably should have been asked before we got a thirty-five thousand dollar return.
And, and this is, this is the whole area, right? People will come from other towns here to.
No, it's, it's limited to residents.
Really, the same experience is limited to residents, but people can come through and drive through the park to see the lights. But as far as the experience, when I put you in my car and I tell Santa what you're asking for Christmas.
Yeah.
Santa will know.
Well, Santa knows anyway. Of course.
Santa will know what you want for Christmas. That's how great it is.
Yeah. Santa's awesome, isn't he?
He is, it's awesome.
Santa knows I want thirty-five thousand dollars in the reserve fund.
That might be, that might be what you get under the tree.
Alright. And precisely, I don't ruin the party or get Santa annoyed or, or Mama Santa. But I, I will, I will both note, because I think these decisions have to be more holistic, comprehensive, and I think you've got the message, but I still, still. Uh not as more protest, but just to stick to my, you know, to the principle that I think we've, because if you do this for everything. Then you lose the.
I don't think this is gonna happen again.
So I hope.
Okay, I, I'll make the motion.
Not anytime.
Second. Augustino.
Trustees, young?
Yes.
Trustee Natchez?
I'm voting no. Uh for reasons that I stated in work session. The fifteen thousand dollars that we've uh just bought for additional materials for this uh event. Fifty thousand dollars, uh that, actually fifty-five thousand dollars. Uh that's, you know, uh is not, that we've allocated in addition to other resources. And I don't think that we've really evaluated uh the cost effectiveness and the approach that should be taken in the allocation of resources. And I think that needs to be better done before we do this. So I, I think the event is good, and I applaud the staff for uh trying to do innovative approaches, uh but it. Like. Trustee to four, I'm very concerned about approaches, making sure that we're doing it in its best we can.
Next. Trustee Lucas?
Um I'm voting yes, I'm, I'm, and I'm changing my mind from now, I, I haven't changed my mind, I've, I've made my point. This is, it's too much of the last minutes, we have to really, really evaluate and um I won't. Change my mind like this again, so um I. But I think both Victor and Dan are correct, and they've made good points, they've been very fiscally responsible as trustees. And um we have to. Really be more careful, more mindful, and be better at planning. But I'm voting yes.
Trustee to four?
No.
Mayor Murphy?
Uh I'm gonna vote yes, and I just want to. And, and I, 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 I agree that we should have had more warning, but it's, you know, sometimes. That happens, uh but I just don't, I just wanna be cautious about the zero-sum game, and the zero-sum game is. If we do this, we can't do that, and, and, and that's not, you know, that, that, that's uh. That uh creates false equivalencies, and it, it creates, you know, excuses for not doing things. And I just wanna be careful about that, because you see that a lot in government, uh you know. You'll see people say, you know, I, I, I don't wanna give uh anything to people uh. Who are undocumented because we have homeless vets, but then I won't give anything to homeless vets. But you know, they, you know, it's the false, not, not that that was what was happening here, but I, I think that that happens a lot in government.
I ju, I just voted, I didn't know I was supposed to make a speech. We did the speeches beforehand.
Alright.
Wonder, everything takes a million years.
Alright, alright, uh quite well taken, Mister uh Young, I can see we're gonna have quicker meetings.
Yeah.
Uh communication to board round two.
Good evening, Allison Stabile, five seven two, Parkway. Um coming to near the end of the meeting, and I want to take this opportunity to publicly thank Dan Natchez and Victor Tofor. Uh for their dedication and hard work as village trustees. As people may know, tonight's their last night, and I think that. Uh they've given six years of their time and energy for what is. Uh they've given six years of their time and energy for what is often a thankless job. And in my opinion, this community owes you gratitude and respect for your service. I wish you both well. Good night.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Allison.
Robert Stark, seven of four, Homer Court. And. Traffic Commission. I want to um. Repeat what Allison said, I wanna thank Victor and Dan for your years of service. This year has not been easy for you. And I wish you the best. I also want to congratulate. Le'wani and Manny on their two victories this year. And wish them the best of luck as trustees, I know you guys are gonna do a terrific job. Thank you. Thank you, good evening.
Thank you.
Anything else?
Okay, uh report from village manager.
I know what this evening, Mayor.
Report from clerk treasurer.
Yes, Mayor. Um, we received correspondence from the public library that the view of vote. Uh on December fourteen, twenty twenty two. And the second item is we have received a resignation from the traffic traffic commissioner, Brian Williams. That is all, Mayor.
Thank you. Uh. What can go to turn?
Nothing for me tonight, Mayor.
Okay, now this is where. Uh and and uh this is where uh members of the uh board. And have uh some time to talk about whatever they want. Wants to go first, Dana Victor?
We 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 told you so earlier, so if you wanna go first, that's fine, Nora.
Go ahead, go ahead.
What do you go?
Okay. Um. As of December five, I will have had the privilege and honor to serve the village as a village trustee for a total of over ten years. There have been many major accomplishments that have moved the village forward and we've also faced many challenges. Certainly Hurricane uh Ida was an extremely challenging event. Many have said it was the worst storm that ever hit the village. Yet as a younger kid around nineteen fifty five, I remember launching a Boston Whaler boat with an outboard. North of the movie theater on Mariner Avenue. And uh rescuing people from their second story windows. Fortunately, the village was not as built up then as it is now, and while the damage was devastating. There were fewer residents displaced uh than were in Ida. And in Ida, people are still recovering with many homes still not able to be occupied. In terms of flooding, we have learned a lot what we did right and what we can improve upon for the future. And we always can improve upon things for the future. Uh, the backbone of this community has always been the volunteers, first responders. Village employees and most importantly, neighbors, all coming together to help each other without agenda. Conditions or partisanship. During the ten years, I have served with many different elected appointed, elected and appointed officials. And volunteers, both in the official capacity as a trustee. Deputy Mayor, as well as a resident concerned about the long term outlook for the village, including maintaining diversity and improving the quality of life. One of the most disturbing challenges we are facing as a community is the increase in lack of civility and public discourse. This has taken the form of sometimes venomous responses by some public officials towards each other and perhaps even more disturbing. Disrespectful and disdainful responses to questions and concerns expressed by members of the public. Unless we, unless unless corrected, this does not bode well for the future of our village. As a public official, I have always tried to maintain an open door policy to be listening to, listening to anyone who wanted to talk about village issues. I have always tried to maintain respectful and professional demeanor, even when those communicating with me have not. I feel anyone holding public office or appointed of office should learn how to disagree without being disagreeable. We owe that to the people who have elected up to represent their interests, not our own. Everyone who sits on this podium as an elected and or appointed official of this village should remember that service is an honor. And privilege bestowed upon us by the residents of the village. To serve is an obligation not to be taken lightly or diminished by petty rude or abusive behavior towards colleagues or members of the public. Or to be distorted by personal views towards those who wish to make their views known. Our constitution, which all public and appointed officials have sworn to uphold, gives all the right to be heard. I have been on the receiving end of some very extreme personal attacks. Innuendos and defaming comments by members of the village's family aimed at hindering my efforts. While I have done my best to serve the village, I will not address all of them. Specifically except to say there should be zero tolerance for unsubstantiated and baseless accusations. Such as those leveled against me by others, including members of the village board and staff. And should they continue, I will not hesitate to take action to express them directly. For now, I will put on the record. What the village has and has not done in terms of investigating the Equal Employment Opportunity Commission. Complaint against the entire Board of Trustees. In mid-August, a member of the village staff filed this, which was only revealed on October twenty fi- five. The only thing in the EEOC complaint that has any merit is that the Board of Trustees did not take any action to investigate the allegation. Such investigations are required to be undertaken when complaints are made. After the EEOC legally became mute in May, the village initiated a quote unlimited unquote. Investigation by having outside counsel talk to me, but not to others. And I have been told that, quote, there is no written investigation report to share. And the EEOC complaint against the entire Board of Trustees, it was stated among other things. That they made unwanted advances towards a member of the village staff by offering a one room wing of my house. With its own locks to that individual and his wife who were commuting to the village. I did this as a gesture of kindness and support. When people relocated, it's rare that they can immediately find suitable accommodations. Often they have to settle for something that is okay, but not what they really want. In that spirit, I offered the individual and his wife free use of the one room wing until they could find something that they really wanted. Or specifically, and I specifically said concierge service is not included. How anyone can commit misconstrue that as a sexual advance is mind boggling. But people are entitled to their interpretation. There were innuendos about my taking pictures of families in a public park enjoying our village facilities. This is no difference in the village taking pictures of families enjoying our facilities and special events that are open to the public without registration. The EEOC filing was signed under the penalty of perjury. And multiple unfounded and untrue statements as facts, as well as serious mischaracterizations were included in this complaint. In the past, the budget cycle, we worked hard to keep budget under the cap. And with a collaborative approach, we were able to barely stay under the cap by approximately seven thousand eight hundred and eighty eight dollars. However, in the first six months since the budget was approved, since the approval of the budget. We have authorized over one million dollars on operating issues not in the budget. Had that been, it would have shattered the cap limit. The village has also undertaken capital expenses of over fourteen million dollars and substantially more are on the horizon. Some are mandated by legal actions, some by regulatory requirements and some by desire. While the projects may be meaningful, the vigil- village borrowing, just like the use of credit cards, has to be paid back in the future. And will translate to higher taxes. We are faced with pricing out the growing senior population as well as low income families from our village. It is unfortunate that some members of the village family. Seem to focus on the messenger and the use of personal biases and or political agendas rather than investigating facts. The village has fallen into a pattern of only listening to some, but not to all of our residents. The challenge for becoming, I'm sorry, the challenge for the incoming Board of Trustees. Staff in our village as a whole is to focus on meaningful approaches. Trying to find and fix what is broken or could be done better in treating all equally. What makes the village special is its diversity, socially, ethnically and economically. Its waterfront and small village feel as opposed to a city. Failure to maintain these features can significantly change the village and not for the better. My commitment has always been to work for what I believe is the best long term interests of the village. And all of the residents with professionalism and integrity. I hope that my record will inspire the new board members to serve their, serve the interest. To all in the village to the best of their abilities and encourage others who may be willing to serve the village. Thanks again for the privilege of serving the village.
Thank you, Mayor. I I really wanted to do this differently, I had more. Organized remarks on priorities, uh things that have not been accomplished, I wanted to do that in work session. So I didn't have any prepared remarks. Um, but I I can. I can uh improvise something, probably. That probably could be even more meaningful. So first I've served six terms under six years, three terms. Two different mayors, three village managers. One deputy, one, one assistant and one treasurer. That's good and 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 two village attorneys, but but along with with and. I I do point the one and one here because they institutional memories and and a lot of good work, so. So I wanna thank, I wanna thank them both. So so let me just kind of think out out of. What what did you, did we all, do we all kind of promise when we're running or we're thinking to do the right thing, you know, say village characters? So thinking about village character, have we, have we accomplished that? I would probably say yes. And it's very hard to do that. But to continue that, you have to really understand what the li- character is and you cannot make it up. So when we started doing the comp plan and we did the moratorium, we really studied the various uh neighborhoods. That works, as you probably heard from early earlier, the previous session, is just being finished. You can't wait too long, this is work that was ready because it it required what was the. Pluses and necessities of the, of the, of the neighborhoods. That was done five years ago, six years ago, so government is too slow. And and now I'm here, I'm not talking to my colleagues, I wanna talk to the residents. Put more pressure on us, I've worked several times in government. And I thought we could do better and now when I see the results, I think we're on the right track, but I think we can certainly. Nail things faster and I think that should be a purpose. Real purpose, because it's, that's something that. I I'm reminded every day, this and this and that, it's still there, and I didn't wanna make a point to earlier today, but. Many of these topics are there.
Yeah.
And residents have worked hard, especially the volunteers, and they keep it up, so anyway, village character. I think that's something residents still want and make it work with realities. The other one is fiscal responsibility, I I think we've been working at it. Uh it, the key point was when uh trustee Lucas and I went to a full week training with the controller's office. When they were, we were told this is right, this is wrong, and we came back and we provide ideas. And we made some changes that have been very fruitful, so thank you for Audi and and his team. And that's what I, when I said, that's when the storms hit or when when we had the pandemic and we had struggling. We were able to reach out, so keep tabs on that, we pass the policy. Make sure it's looked at or you don't reinvent the wheel. The third point I'll make is environmental sustainability and resilience, it was not on the books, it's now there. The chapter that we have is terrific, uh the, we've we've not just waited for the complant, but we are. Uh in the state's programs uh with NYSERDA, with DEC. And it pays off, uh so we we started this and I'm sure now the new generation is gonna push for it more. We 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 really put put the seeds on that in the last uh six years. Flooding, that one cuts two ways, on the one hand, we did work very hard. Uh we worked on the hazard mitigation plan, if we had not worked on the ha- hazard mitigation plan, you know, things would have been. Difficult, bit different, right? So it's very hard work and probably the funding was not there entirely. And the county wanted to do the right thing, DEC still, actually now finally they're working on a resilience plan and there's real work coming down. The 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 pieces are coming together, finally, the Army Corps of Engineers, the state and the county are right there, so demand that it happens. Why? Because we talk too much, but I think it has to be put in a comprehensive flooding resilience plan that can be. Then then uh uh be mandated or enforced or have the the trustees, whoever they are. Be accountable and they can then work with the manager, but have that plan, because we're talking a lot. But we, we're not, we were not integrating the pieces and nobody's gonna do it for us. Nobody's gonna do it for us. On that point, I have, I have, I have one, one uh. Um, issue that we never got resolved, we we have in this village the water committee. Name that is not that powerful, not that, because it, but it's the committee that was supposed to integrate everything, the flood mitigation. zoning, planning, the board and put put all this and we. It it was probably too much to ask, so I think that's something I would ask you to demand that all those issues are put together. Whether the dam gets redone or not, whether the areas need a certain improvement, that has to be looked holistically. Because day to day activity slows down government, it's very hard and the village is not just a village, it's a city, we have all the difficulties. Of a, of a, so I'll just come down to a couple things, priorities. Early on, we we, when I came to this board, we were having problems of of getting along as a board and civility. Uh we we uh, no, we worked very hard and it changed dramatically, we it we changed it. Why? Because we committed to do it. And I think the last, the first two years were okay, the second. Uh the term was okay, but the last term has not been a good one. Which brings me to the final point, is this a better place than when I came six years ago? Tough question, I think on the one hand, yes. On the one hand, government has has improved a little better, employees. Uh I think actually the morale, the atmosphere is a mix, but 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 it's hanging there, but I think. The key point is, uh can we do better? And that's probably the the answer is yes, I think we really. Need to change and and move along uh on for the better and I think that. The getting along is is something that has to be made a purpose. If you don't commit to doing it, you don't do. So with that note, I thank this, uh all the staff, colleagues for for having me, for tolerating my. My rhetorics, my my uh accent, everything, thank you very much for having me and that's why I came from Mariner. For this diverse group and I still happy to have my daughter here. Thank you very much.
Thank you both and I I wish you both uh health and uh good luck in all your future endeavors. Uh minutes, boards, commissions and committees. Minutes of Board of Trustees Work Session, a regular meeting on November fourteenth, twenty twenty two. Minutes of the Committee for the Environment of October eighteenth and November fifteenth, twenty twenty two. Minutes of the Board of Architecture Review Meeting of September sixth and November first, twenty twenty two. And minutes of ad hoc board committee meetings.
Uh they're not minutes, there were notes, it's, they aren't minutes.
Okay.
Well, what, somebody took notes and submitted them, but they're, they're gonna discuss them at their meeting coming Thursday, so they shouldn't have been listed.
Alright. Uh. And your motion to adjourn?
I'm moved.
Second.
All in favor? Alright, have a good night. Thank you for your service.
Okay, you're doing it, Dan.
Dan, thank you for your service.
I'll make sure we name something in cameras later.
Alrighty.
Yeah, I'm gonna take you to go to state now.
Tomorrow, right?
Oh, now? No, because when I have a vehicle with.
Okay.
I'm fairly confident that.